Good afternoon and welcome to the September 23, 2020 session of the Board of Zoning Appeals. In a moment, we will commence the call of our calendar, which can be found on the calendar and agenda links for the Board of Zoning Appeals on the town's website. If you wish to join this virtual hearing, you can do so by using the address www.brookhaven.ny.gov/join or utilize the virtual hearing link found on the Board of Appeals webpage again on the town's website. Again, to participate in this hearing, you can do so by using those links, but when becoming, I'm sorry, when becoming a participant and attendee, please name yourself with your name and the case number that you have interest in speaking on. There's no way for us to determine when to bring you up unless you've let us know what case number that you intend to speak on. Applications before the board will consist of three parts, the presentation of the applicant, the testimony of those wishing to speak on the application, and finally, the rebuttal testimony of the applicant limited to those issues brought on by persons speaking in opposition. At the conclusion of each of the presentations, this board will take one of three actions. We can decide the case today by a motion to grant or to deny the relief requested. Alternatively, we can close the public hearing and place the matter on our decision calendar. Finally, we can hold the public hearing open to a future date. If the motion that you hear at the end of your case is a motion to grant the application, what this means simply is that the relief that you seek from the board has been granted, a grant letter will issue from the Board of Appeals Office within seven to 10 business days. That is the document that you return to the building department with to continue with your endeavor. If the motion that you hear at the end of your case is a motion to close the public hearing and place a matter on decision calendar, what this means is that your public hearing or your virtual hearing was held today and the record is now closed under the code that board has 62 days to render a decision. Once that decision is rendered, the applicant will be notified directly. Those interested in viewing a copy of the decision can do so. Finding it on the calendar and agenda links for the Board of Zoning Appeals on the town's webpage once that decision has been filed with the town clerk. Finally, if the motion that you hear at the end of your case is a motion to hold the public hearing open to a future date, this occurs when either as applicant, you've not met conditions precedent to the relief that you seek from this board or more commonly where the board requires additional information before we can decide the application. In this instance, the matter is held over to a future date for the required information on that future date, the required information is made part of the record and then the matter closed for decision. I think that should be it. This is a three interval calendar today. We appreciate your patience and waiting to be heard. I'll ask for your attention for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you again. Welcome again to the September 23, 2020 virtual hearing of the Board of Zoning Appeals. May we have roll call, please?
Board members, James Mazzarella, Charles Lazarou, Rick Cunha.
I understand that Rick Cunha may be late, but we will see as soon as he comes on.
Ronald Lindsay, Howard Berksen, Deputy Chair James Wisdom, Chairman Paul DeChance.
As I understand also, there are no postponements from our first interval calendar. That's the 2:00 PM interval calendar. Having said that, then we can commence this hearing with cases one and two. And let me say again, we are taking one and two together. Those persons interested in speaking on cases one and two, please reidentify yourself immediately so that our staff can bring you up to speak during this hearing that you have interest in.
Case number one, Harbor Boat Realty, Inc., 24 Swanview Drive, Patchogue. Location, southwest corner Sunrise Highway, South Service Road and Bellport Station Road, Bellport. Applicant requests height variance for proposed relocation of 48-foot-high, 128-square-foot non-illuminated detached sign. Also permission for four proposed LED internally illuminated gas canopy signs located on north, south, east, and west elevations. Case number two, in the name of LBW Bellport LLC, 345 Park Avenue, New York, New York, located on the south side of Sunrise Highway, 490 feet west of Bellport Station Road, Bellport. Applicant requests height variance for proposed relocation of existing two-sided 70-foot-high, 392-square-foot detached sign.
All right, then while we're waiting for the applicant's representatives to come up, let me just say again that these cases are being called together. They are adjacent parcels. Those interested in speaking on them, please reidentify yourself with these case numbers, one and two, so that we can bring you up to speak on these applications that you may have interest in. If there's any question as to how to rename yourself, just please utilize the chat or the Q and A options found on the Zoom platform and we have persons to assist you.
Mr. Chairman, I have Tim Shea for the applicant and Wayne Muller for the applicant.
All right. We can bring those up. Mr. Shea, I can see you. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
You have Wayne Muller with you. Is that someone that you're having speak on behalf of the applicant?
He may speak. Hopefully, he won't have to.
Is there anyone else that should be brought up at the same time?
I believe that will be it. Thank you.
All right, then. Why don't we start then with your appearance for the record?
Okay, J. Timothy Shea Jr., Sir Tilman Ballin, 100 Motor Parkway, Hop Dog, New York for the applicants.
All right, Mr. Shea, as you are aware, the board's planner reviewed these applications and I'm speaking specifically to cases one and two. Mr. Reed is with us on this virtual hearing. We'll take his testimony concerning his findings.
Pertaining to case number one, the applicant seeks relief for proposed relocation of existing ground sign and the property is located at the southwest corner of Sunrise Highway Service Road and Station Road in the Hamlet of Bellport and home to the 6,490-square-foot Royal Oak Diner. It is noted that the existing ground sign is located at the northwest corner of the parcel, which is now intended for a fueling station in conjunction with the BJ's Wholesale Store. Town Board granted a change of zone to J5 Business for this use on April 11, 2019 with conditions including, but not limited to, the following. At the time of the site plan application, the applicant shall submit a companion land division application to separate the J5 motor vehicle station from the J2 Restaurant Parcel. As such, the diner ground sign will no longer be on diner property with the conveyance of the 1.6-acre parcel to BJ's and is intended to be relocated near the access drive. Wherein the subject property will then comprise of 3.2 acres. Building Department records reveal that the Board of Appeals granted permission in 1976 for a 50-foot-high, 148-square-foot ground sign at the premises depicting Howard Johnson's. Acknowledging same section 57A15 of Town Code states that no existing sign may be structurally altered, rebuilt, enlarged, extended, relocated, or modified in any way except in conformity with the provisions of this section. It is the opinion of staff that the desired relief, both a 75% deviation of code requirements of area and height respectively, to be substantial. While the subject application is simply an exercise to move the ground sign onto the applicant's property and the parcel enjoys frontage on Sunrise Highway to communicate the business, attribute does not appear to warrant a sign 48 feet in height and there now may be an opportunity to now provide for a sign more closely meeting code requirement, which provides for ground signs at 12 feet in height. With regard to the canopy signs, the applicant seeks a 46% relaxation for same prior zoning board actions for canopy signs exceeding town requirements include the following. S. Case number seven of June 29, 2011, 25A Sinai LLC. Case number 12 of September 8, 2010, and Yap Hank Properties, case number seven of August 21, 2013, all which proposed 24-square-foot canopy signs and were subsequently denied. In an application known as Bill Wolfe Petroleum, case number seven of January 11, 2012, a grant provided for 16-square-foot canopy signs and staff is not aware of any precedent in prior zoning board actions for 22-square-foot canopy signs. It is noted that the next variance application is for a proposed 392-square-foot, 70-foot-high BJ's ground sign, which is adjacent to the subject property to the west and the application is a type-two action. With regard to case number two, the applicant seeks relief for a proposed alteration of an existing ground sign properties located on the south side of Sunrise Highway, 490 feet west of Station Road in the Hamlet of Bellport and home to the 87,788-square-foot BJ's Wholesale Club. It is noted that the Board of Appeals granted certain variances for the wholesale club stemming from an application known as Portwood, case number 20 through 22 of May 15, 2013. And while certain variances were granted for wall signage, none was sought for the ground sign. And the existing ground sign at the premises is 70 feet in height and 269 and a half square feet, which currently advertises the wholesale club. Staff finds that the existing sign was incorporated with the Bellport Outlet Center Site Plan approved by the Planning Board in 1989. The proposal seeks to add 122 and a half square feet to communicate the gasoline filling station and pricing. There is no increase in height for the sign in that the proposed 122 and a half square foot panel is below the existing panel. It is noted that the Town Board granted a change of zone to J5 Business for the gasoline filling station on April 11, 2019 with conditions including, but not limited to, the following. At the time of the site plan application, the applicant shall submit a companion land division application to separate the J5 motor vehicle station from the J2 Restaurant Parcel. As previously mentioned, the existing sign was granted at 70 feet in height by the Planning Board. And acknowledging same section 57A15 of Town Code states that no existing sign may be structurally altered, rebuilt, enlarged, extended, relocated, or modified in any way except in conformity with the provisions of this section. Staff finds that not only will the business be advertised at 70 feet in height, gasoline pricing will be displayed 65 feet in the air. Staff notes the other Bellport Outlet Home Depot Shopping Center across Sunrise Highway enjoys a 504-square-foot, 85-foot-high ground sign permitted on the CO-244890. And like the subject sign, staff surmises that permission for same was incorporated in the improved site plan application. It's the opinion of staff that the desired relief, both a 92% and 83% deviation of code requirement of air and height is respectively to be substantial. While the subject application is an exercise to add an additional pricing panel and the parcel enjoys frontage on Sunrise Highway to communicate the business, attribute does not appear to warrant a sign 70 feet in height. There may now be an opportunity to provide for signage more closely meeting code requirement, which provides for ground signs at 12 feet in height, the application also is a type-two action.
All right, then for the record, those are the comments of the board's planner, Christopher Reed. Mr. Shea, without complicating this, it appears to the board that the applicant proposes three things. One, to move the diner sign onto the diner property. Number two, to add canopy signs to a new canopy station. And number three, to alter the existing BJ sign. So let me give you the opportunity to give us your presentation.
Okay, first and foremost, after reading Mr. Reed's report yesterday, we found a certificate of compliance for the existing BJ sign, which we have forwarded to the board. It is under certificate number CC274733 issued October 27, 2014, which certifies that the original non-conforming pylon sign with an 18 by 28, meaning perends 504 square feet, two-sided pylon sign, overall height 70, setback 20 from roadway, refaced to read BJ's Wholesale Club. So this would indicate that this is a 504-square-foot sign larger than the sign that we are applying for. This is important because one of the notes that Mr. Reed brings up is that we would be increasing the size of the pylon sign. Just want to make that clear to the board. And as indicated, these are companion cases. This is, we are representing LBW and Harbor Boat Realty. And it does involve two adjacent lots located on the southwest corner of Sunrise Service Road and Station Road. So currently occupied by BJ's Wholesale and the Royal Oak Diner. The area technically on the Royal Oak Diner site was the rezoned portion to J5 for inclusion of the members-only BJ's gas station, which would be situated between the wholesale club and the Royal Oak Diner. We also do have pending the land division and site plan applications that were referenced in Mr. Reed's report. Whereas in the J5 gas site, will be on its own lot, but pursuant to the changes on conditions must be incorporated within the BJ's wholesale site. The new gas station will be accessed through the existing curb cut on the BJ's property and the gas station will be set back 100 feet from the roadway pursuant to the town's arterial highway setback requirements with landscaping and natural cover to remain. Thus, the gas station itself will not be visible from Sunrise Highway and will only be visible from the Sunrise Highway Service Road as you really come up upon the site itself. Thus, in very close proximity to the curb cut. As such, BJ's is seeking to modify its existing pylon sign, which according to its CFC is 70 feet high and 504 square feet in size. The application is to result in a 392-square-foot, 70-foot-high replacement sign, which reconfigures the BJ's logo and adds gas pricing. Gas pricing part of the signage is in compliance with federal and state law, which requires gas stations to advertise its sign, its prices conspicuously for passing motorists. This is the best place to advertise those, that, those pricing because if it's lower, people will pass by the site before they can even see that there is gas or that there are gasoline prices. Thus, leaving the sign where it is will allow it to be conspicuous to motorists approaching from either side on Sunrise Highway from the east or the west. As I indicated, the sign is actually smaller than that, which is CFC currently. Furthermore, as Mr. Reed points out, the Home Depot across Sunrise Highway enjoys a 504-square-foot sign with an 85-foot height. In both cases, the signs were part of approved site plans with CFCs. Further, the site is accessed down the long service road of the Sunrise Highway. So the height is needed so that people can exit off onto the service road and see the sign from a further distance. And this alerts people to the business location prior so that they won't miss their exit. The second part of the application, well, the other application involves the relocation of the 128-square-foot, 32-foot-high pylon for the Royal Oak Diner and the canopy signs for the gas station. The relocation of the diner sign is a condition of the change of zone. As Mr. Reed's report points out, the BZA approved the Howard Johnson sign at 50 feet in height and 148 feet, square feet in 1976. Thus, the applicant is seeking less relief than was previously granted. Like BJ's, Royal Oak requires the sign to alert motorists to its business location. The application will result in relocation of the sign approximately 200 feet to the east and it will also relocate the sign from almost a zero or one foot setback along Sunrise Highway to a 20-foot setback in compliance with code. Thus, the relocation of the sign will result in us being in greater compliance with the Town of Brookhaven zoning code. The Royal Oak replaced Howard Johnson's in the mid-1980s and has been owned by the same family since then. For 30 years, the Royal Oak has provided good sit-down eating establishment to the local community, bringing a sense of community in place and employment to the area. The diner business as a whole has been under tremendous pressure even before the COVID outbreak. I've represented other diners in other locations and diner owners. The proliferation of national chains, sit-down chains, fast food restaurants, and home delivery of meals has substantially cut into the market, leading on more than one occasion for my clients to redevelopment of diner sites. One such example, a great location you would think was the diner opposite the MacArthur Airport, represented the owner. They had difficulty given the new competition, meaning inside the terminal itself and in the immediate area. And that diner eventually closed and was replaced by an Anthony Cold Fired Pizza and a Starbucks. The Royal Oak is currently closed because of COVID and seeking to reopen once the epidemic is under control. This sign is extremely important to the marketability and the visibility of the Royal Oak Diner to deliver to its customers and to its potential customers that it is open for business. The sign variance is integral part of its business operation and like the BJ sign, there is no way to communicate its location to drivers on Sunrise Highway short of the requested variance. Furthermore, the sign is consistent with the area as evidenced by the Home Depot and current BJ signs and will not impact any nearby properties. The signs are in the nature and character of the neighborhood. The variance is not substantial and there will be no impact. I would note the following, which is, under New York State case law, this is considered a replacement in kind. A replacement in kind has been ruled to not have any significant impact upon the neighborhood. This is first elaborated upon in the case of Andenberg versus New York State DEC, in a case in Albany County wherein the courts held that in a replacement bridge, even though the bridge was eight feet wider, was going to have a paved deck rather than a wooded deck, be supported by concrete culverts rather than natural stone apartments, the new bridge is not substantially different in size. And although does incorporate modern construction and design, the decision to classify the project as a replacement in kind is not arbitrary or capricious. There are numerous other cases, most recent of which is 2017, the Second Department overruled the Village of Pittsburgh Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals, where they required the applicant to, they made a determination that a application to replace a house and demolish it with a new house was a type-two action requiring full environmental vetting. The courts not only held that the town planning board and zoning board were incorrect in determining the action to be a type-two action, they found that the replacement in kind was a type-one action, not requiring any environmental review. They also found that there was no impact of the replacement in kind, even though the house in fact was going to be slightly larger and of different materials. These cases can be tied to the cases in front of the board here today in that we are doing a replacement in kind of the signed structures. Relocating of the diner structure does not take it out of the realm of a replacement in kind. It's further tied into other court cases that have found that regardless of what we call the substantiality on a percentage basis, it is the impact of the variance that the court, that the Board of Appeals must look at when determining whether there is actually an impact and whether the substantiality overrules. The courts have said that even though on a lot depth variance, even though the variance was substantial, there was no evidence that granting the variance would produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, adversely impact on the physical or environmental conditions or otherwise result in any detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or the community. These cases tie in that way is that because of the fact that courts have already found that replacement in kinds have no impact. When the Board of Appeals makes its decision, they must also find that there is in fact no impact by the replacement in kind that we are proposing here with regard to the two pylon signs. And we would ask that the board grant both applications. With regard to the canopy signs, we have read Mr. Reed's comments. And although we believe based on the location of the canopies being so far from the street frontage, we would have enough to support our variance application for the 22 feet as sought, we would be willing to reduce our variance request to 16 feet as was granted in the case of Bill Wolfe Petroleum as indicated in Mr. Reed's report.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Are you asking for the application to be amended?
That it would be fine.
Does the board then have a motion to amend the request for canopy sign relief to be an area of 16 square feet proposed where 12 feet is permitted? Motion and second have been made in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. The amended application, case number one, then calls for 16-square-foot canopy signs.
Okay, again, the rationale for that would be that the canopy signs are back further. You do need canopy signs. It is consistent with prior precedent. And we would ask that the board grant the amended application with regard to the canopy signs. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, and I will give it to the board for questions. Just on your willingness to speak to the board concerning case law, I will state though, there's a distinction here because 57A15 of the code specifically talks to the alteration or even the relocation of signs. And I don't believe in any of the cases that you mentioned that there was a similar provision within their code. Having said that, I don't think that we need to get involved in the legal aspect of what we're doing. Let me just give it to the board for questions concerning the application.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lazarou.
I have a few questions for Counselor. One is, I'm looking at both applications, one and two. And sometimes I'm a little confused, but I'm trying to unconfuse myself. Yeah, it's, don't get old.
I'm getting there already, Mr. Lazarou.
Yeah, sure. You have a long way to go to catch me. On the application that's marked number one, the site plan, which is just called Property Situate at Bellport, there is only one indication on that site plan and that site plan is highlighting apparently a sign that is under question, which says the top of the sign at a certain elevation of some sort. Which sign in these pictures that I have been given, which sign is that?
Can you pull back off of that so I can get a better look at the location? I'm sorry.
That one right there.
Okay, that sign is the, that is the diner sign.
That's the diner sign.
Correct.
And the diner sign is not depicted in any pictures that I have.
You should have a site plan, but if I may, if you take a look at the curb cut, which is to your which is to your right to the right of the yellow markers is curb cut right here?
Yeah.
All right, that that area the proposed new sign would be twenty would be on the left hand side of that driveway.
Yeah.
Twenty feet from the street frontage which would be in compliance with the setback requirements of the town of Brookhaven.
Okay. But I see that on the draft site plan which is one depicting the divided diner site which now is grown enough to indicate the service station or the gas station.
Correct.
That's the relocated diner diner pylon sign and that will not have any BJ's names or numbers on it or will it?
That won't have anything to do with BJ's whatsoever that will only be the Royal Oak diner sign.
Okay, that.
And that will be on their demised property after the after the land division is approved.
Okay, so that relocates the sign the existing sign for the diner which you're not involved with.
Well, I am. It's part of the application. It's it's a twofold application.
No, I know. I understand that but that's that remains the diner sign.
Correct.
Okay. Now, I have two pictures one of a existing BJ sign which is this is the sign of the other application to augment the sign or revise the sign to indicate the the gasoline prices.
Correct.
So the one sign that we have which is the existing sign and then way off in the distance you can see in the background above the trees which is the existing diner sign. Now, this is the sign that you're indicating that there is some form of right or or declaration that you can advertise the gas signs as part of this sign whether they and so they can be seen from the the not only the service road but the Route twenty seven highway. Is this going to be if I can recall in the the writings is this going to be internally illuminated?
Yes, it is. Just as the just as the current one is.
The current one is so you have this new format.
Correct.
Is it is it is at the same height as the existing which is seventy feet?
Correct.
Not no change in height?
No.
Just change in the format and the width and the height of the BJ's logo plus all the gas signs indicated.
Correct.
Okay. What what do the the canopy signs that we've just agreed to amend your proposal and and we have made an amendment to this what do they look like are they advertising gas prices are they advertising just that is a BJ's BJ gas or filling station?
All they all they say is BJ's gas. There's no further advertisement of prices on the canopy signs.
Anywhere else on the property advertising gas prices?
No, the only place would be there and above the pumps obviously. Again, that's those are those are state and federal laws which require you to one conspicuously post the price at someplace where motorists can see it and then there's a second law which requires you to post the price above the pump.
Okay, so it is your presentation that if you were to propose a new gas station sign at a lower height that wouldn't do the same as that which is at the seventy foot height?
Well, I would think this is that if the board was not inclined to grant the application we would keep the BJ sign at seventy feet and five hundred and four feet at that particular location we are creating a new lot in front of the gas station and we'd be legally in permitted to put up a new third sign for BJ's gas on the gas station site so we think that the better option here is to reduce the size of our current sign include the gas and obviate the need for a new third pylon sign on Sunrise Highway this will accomplish the goal of reducing the proliferation of signs on street frontages which is one of the town's goals so we find that this is actually in compliance with the town policies of reducing the number of signs on street frontage.
I understand that. Just just one point. This is not a question but something to point out to the engineers or whoever is this R and M engineering?
Yes.
The in the in the various drawings that were submitted the one drawing that I have about the BJ's fueling station for number two proposal number two and another drawing which is SP two between the two of them you might want to have someone look at the drawings goes on one drawing the fuel tanks that are buried are on the western side of the fuel state state station opposite the area where the fuel pumps are and the canopy is and then on the other drawing SP two those gas tanks are on the eastern side of that so you might want to have that corrected. So which is it?
I believe hold on one second. Okay, yeah, so the one with the fuel tanks on the eastern side is the most up to date drawing the ones on the western side were the were the ones that were originally proposed what happened was at the town board application we had initially proposed the if you look at there's a shaded area
Yeah.
About halfway down where cross access is proposed.
Yeah.
Which is actually toward the back of the property. After talking with the planning staff what we ended up doing is flipping the cross access to closer to the sunrise highway street frontage so if you look at the plan the SP two.
Yes.
That has the cross access up front and the tank locations on the east side of the actual.
That that is the more correct.
That is the that is the correct one. This is the older version that's on the board right now.
Okay.
The only things that changed were the cross access point and the flipping of the tanks.
Right and are are we to assume that these drawings especially one of them that is that is marked a draft they are drafted in fact don't have any engineer seals on them.
These were subsequently submitted to the planning staff with signs and seals the SP two is the most up to date plan that is under review it does not nothing on this plan changed the location or the size of the signage that we're talking about or the location of the canopy the canopy stayed in exactly the same place on both of these plans.
I someone indicated and Anthony if you would put those elevations back up that you you indicated so I can take a look at yeah I can't see them at this scale but what is you know we are we're all in with respects to the height of the canopy and the width of the canopy and the lighting and all that sort of stuff that eventually has to be proposed.
That's all pursuant to code.
Very good. All right. I have no further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Lazarus. Was there anything further from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I just very briefly a couple of questions.
Yes, of course. Mr. Burksen.
All right, so Tim, we're trying to keep this brief as possible.
Okay.
Is the gas station property going to be owned by the same owner as the Belleport as the as the BJ property?
It's it's going I I don't want to speak offhand I my recollection was going to be a lease but I don't recall off the top of my head I I don't ownership doesn't really concern me that much and it really isn't a land use issue I to be honest with you. I understand I understand it's asked. Either way, it will be under the site will be under control of BJ's either.
I understand but we do we have any assurance that in a year or so there won't be a separate gas station there with an application excuse me?
Absolutely. The the town board resolution.
Tim, let me let me stop you there. I'm sorry.
Tim, I'm gonna try not to interrupt you.
I'm sorry.
You try not to interrupt me.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so in answer my question is do we have any assurance that there will be in a year or so whatever the period of time is a separate operator operating the gas station asking to put up an Exxon Mobil Shell whatever sign so we're gonna have a big sign at seventy foot feet high and another sign in any event? Is there any assurance that we're not gonna get another operator there?
Yes, there is. Within the town board resolution the town board required that the sites be commonly operated and 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 they only access is through the BJ site.
Okay.
Will not we we've agreed to no to a covenant that there would be no additional curb cuts.
Okay. All right, I guess that's best we're gonna be able to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burksen. May I ask is there anyone wishing to speak on the application or do we have any written communication here? It would be for cases both one and two.
Mr. Chairman, I have no speakers on this case.
All right, I'm being advised by Mr. Carty that we have nothing written is that being the case I'll ask with regard to case number one as amended with the sixteen square foot canopy signs as the board have a motion.
Close and hold.
Motion is by Mr. Lazarus to close and hold two second to that.
Second.
Then I'll take that from Mr. Lindsay all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries with regard to case number two to the board of a motion.
Close and hold.
Motion is by Mr. Lazarus to close and hold second and again by Mr. Lindsay all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Shay, are you with us on the next case three and four?
I don't believe so. I think I'm a little later on down the line.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Case numbers three and four Bollywood Entertainment GP Inc. Care of Colonial Property Consultants P O Box five oh five Mystic Beach properties located on the northeast corner Mastic Boulevard and William Floyd Parkway west side of Letta Place Shirley applicant requests the following relief for proposed improvements of existing restaurant building with proposed drive through minimum lot area two acres required point five seven acres existing minimum lot with throughout one hundred and fifty feet required one hundred and five feet provided front yard setback fifty feet required forty feet provided minimum side yard twenty five feet required twenty foot six inches provided also permission for three proposed ground signs a monument sign menu board and preview board one ground sign is permitted and permission for said monument sign to be located less than the required twenty two feet from William Floyd Parkway four feet is provided also permission for menu board to exceed the twenty four square feet permitted thirty five square feet provided.
All right, while we're waiting for the applicant to come up, Mr. Shay, I know that you can still hear us the reason why I asked you about case number three and four is you've named yourself one three dash four so I think you're in case twelve and thirteen I'll advise Mr. Vega that but if you do have the opportunity to rename yourself using those case numbers it would assist us.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vega.
I have Mario Vigliata for the applicant Bollywood Entertainment.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Vigliata, we can see you. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Very good. Do we have the board's attorney with us yet?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
I'm here, Paul.
Oh, very good. Let's swear in Mr. Vigliata, please.
You solemnly swear the truth the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Very good, sir. Let's start with your appearance for the record.
Mario Vigliata Colonial Property Consultants P O Box five oh five Mystic Beach, New York.
Thank you, Mr. Vigliata. As you're probably aware, the board's planner Christopher Reed reviewed this application and he is here to testify today so we're going to start with his testimony.
The applicant seeks area variances in conjunction with proposed drive through for Dunkin' Donuts Restaurant and the properties located on the northeast corner Mastic Boulevard and William Floyd Parkway in the Hamlet of Shirley it is noted that the subject parcel has enjoyed a restaurant at the premises dating back to nineteen seventy eight with the issuance of a certificate of occupancy the subject application intends to provide for a drive through facility where ten feet on the building on the north side is intended to be demolished to accommodate the drive through window and in order to provide for the drive through the applicant submitted a change of zone and special permit application with the town board which was granted on November nineteen twenty fifteen covenants incorporated with this prior application include but are not limited to the following the existing detached pylon sign shall be removed and any new detached sign shall be limited to monument style only and the proposed plan is in conformance with the town board mandates and as previously noted the parcel has been improved with the restaurant for approximately forty years and there are improved parcels to the west of the subject property and as such with regard to the request for lot area and frontage is the opinion of staff that there are no feasible alternatives for the applicant to pursue other than the requested relief and while the side yard relief does not conform to code requirement same as actually increasing with the removal of the ten foot section of the building to accommodate the drive through and while the ground sign requires significant setback relief there are apparent hardships in complying with the required setback based upon the limited depth of the landscaped island and further the distance to the pavement to William Floyd Parkway is approximately twenty five feet due to the excess right away areas for this arterial and as such it is the opinion of staff that no impediments to traffic safety is anticipated with its proposed location and pertaining to the quantity of signage the applicant is seeking relief for three ground signs wherein one is permitted however two of the signs are intended as a preview board and menu board associated with the drive through facility and not a typical ground sign advertising the restaurant at the street frontage and staff finds that similar relaxations for menu and preview signage has been granted by the Board of Appeals for such drive through facilities the main ground sign is proposed at thirty five square feet and which is intended to advertise Dunkin' Donuts Baskin Robbins and Nathan's there is no objection to said relief where the extra eleven square feet appears appropriate to advertise the three tenants in addition to the area variances before the Board of Appeals site plan approval is required with the planning board and the companion applications are type two actions.
Okay, that is a testimony of the board's planner Christopher Reed for the record, Mr. Vigliata. What presentation did you have for the board?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, thank you very much. As stated by Mr. Reed, this application for variances is based on the planning board application for a drive through currently the Dunkin' Donuts is just south of a Wendy's and a Taco Bell which currently both have drive throughs and which is you know and so in seeking this drive through which was was applied for prior to the pandemic but now during this this time drive through windows have been greatly the both of the need and call for windows has been greatly increased which lends toward social distancing and you know that both protect both patrons and employees. The design of the of the layout puts the need for these variances and as basically stated by Mr. Reed the hardship for the the area the hardship for the area, square footage and area of the property lends toward there's really no other resolution for the setback. If approved, this would be the only property in the area that would conform to the town ordinance having to do with monument signs. Other than that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mazarella.
Yeah, say Mario.
Hello, Jim.
So, I guess my, I like the fact that there is no egress onto Alita Place. That's an improvement. My concern mostly with this is the southern egress onto Mastic Boulevard. And my question would be, the diagram showing, I guess it's nine cars, is, do we know why that figure was used? Is there, were there any studies as to the amount of cars that would be utilizing this drive-through at different periods?
I have to honestly say, I don't, I'm not aware of it. I did, I was brought in on this in the, for the application for the BCA, so I was a part of the planning board.
Right. I only asked that question, I mean, because the relief that's being sought is a square footage relief of the entire lot. And obviously, you know, the relaxation is significant. And I just wonder, you know, utilization-wise, how many cars are we going to, you know, see commonly in that area? Only, again, looking at that egress, you know, if we increase it by one more car, then what happens to that traffic flow on Mastic Boulevard? Especially when there's a traffic light that leads out onto William Floyd. That would be one concern. And again, I think that maybe that could be answered through planning. I don't, I don't know. And I also would have the same concern for the parking spots 13, 14, and 15 if there was a car number 10. Do you know what the traffic flow is going to be inside of this parking lot? So, so let's just assume, you know, after car number nine, we put a car number 10. Does car number 11 come in from Mastic Boulevard? Does the line continue out that way or does the line continue towards the western part of the lot, like towards the front?
Well, having been familiar with the area and the traffic flow in that intersection, the Mastic Boulevard, all cars coming through, that are going to use this are going to be coming from Montauk Highway going westbound, they'll make a left onto Alita. And currently, the other two fast food restaurants that enjoy a drive-through window have the cars lining up and feeding in through Alita. You know, they come in going south on Alita and then feed in. This actually, this drive-through, I think would tend to help a little bit of the traffic stall that's during the rush hours because you can't make a left off of Montauk Highway onto William Floyd Parkway. You have to go down to Alita, make a right onto Mastic Boulevard, go up to the light at William Floyd and make a left there. And getting some of these cars that want to go to the fast food restaurants off of Alita and Mastic Boulevard, I think would help with some of the traffic flow. But to answer your question, the entrance, the cars number 10 and 11 would be coming in, feeding in off of Alita, making a right and going west on Mastic Boulevard and then feeding in.
Okay, but I mean, is there going to be some signage? In other words, so if those cars 10 and 11 start feeding in from Mastic Boulevard, are there also going to be cars feeding in from that other entrance that is up on William Floyd? You know, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to see how this, this area where 13, 14.
Oh, I see your question.
How that's going to be negotiated?
Okay. Yes, there is an entrance off of Montauk Highway going northbound on William Floyd. And really, there would be no, you know, there would be no hampering for a patron to drive in off of that entrance and get on the line. So, at this point, unless you, I don't see how you could actually stop that.
Right. Yeah, and that's, you know, that would, I guess that would be my concern as to, you know, with, you know, the number, the number of cars, which is, I don't know, is that an unknown or non-unknown? I mean, I do agree with you in regard to drive-throughs becoming more sought after in the time of COVID indeed. And so, you know, for this application, I look at that as a blessing and also a curse because we don't know the amount of vehicles. And I can only say, my only experience is out at the Starbucks out in Manneville 111. You know, and I've gone there in the middle of the day and I park because I gotta be honest, there's more than nine cars on that, on that drive-through line. And they have a big giant lot in the back because they used to, you know, they had the Hampton Jitney coming in and out of there.
Right.
Okay. As far, as far as getting, as far as getting a truck in for the loading operations, which I know that was done previously off of Alita, which will now be closed. How's that going to transpire as far as, as far as the loading?
Low loading would have to be entering through Mastic Boulevard entrance. Well, actually, it could actually also come in through the William Floyd entrance.
But again, but again, where, where is that truck going to go once it's on the premises?
Well, it's my understanding that all deliveries would be done in the evening or early, early mornings before heavy traffic would ensue. And it would have to be unloaded and hand-trucked in from the parking lot.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I would have to agree only because I don't see how you get a 40-foot trailer certainly in the back at all or in the side from Mastic Boulevard. So I would have to agree and, you know, that's something I think that maybe we have some interest in adding to maybe a covenant or such on the time that that truck may be permitted to load and unload. But, you know, early morning may be the best time, but really early in the morning. Because I think, I think you're going to have people here in the morning naturally coming. Okay, did I have anything else? And I guess, I mean, maybe I'm being redundant. I think you said you made, you didn't have the answer because you came in late on this application. But I think it may help if there were some studies done as far as the amount of vehicles that may be in that line at any one time, if there's data anywhere on that, it may be helpful. But other than that, I have no further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mazarella. I can, I can help a little bit by telling, by saying that I believe Brookhaven Town Code 85467 E6 requires that a drive-through be able to show a minimum queuing of eight cars. This is why we're looking at this site plan when it's showing a car as because it has to. If it didn't, if it couldn't show eight, then it wouldn't, it wouldn't satisfy that section of the code. Mr. Vigliata, though, Mr. Mazarella brings up a very good point. Has, has there been traffic studies concerning the, the, the area immediately in the vicinity of this, of this parcel and, and whether or not the parcel can accommodate the relief that you seek for the, for the drive-through?
I have to apologize again and tell you that I did not have an answer to that question, but I can inquire and see if any traffic studies were done. Again, because I was brought on in on this.
So we're familiar with the closest, I mean, the large intersection close to this, which is Montauk and William Floyd. And if I recollect correctly, is it that you can't make a left-hand turn off of Montauk Highway? Do you know the traffic pattern there?
Yes, I do.
All right. So what is it? No left turn off of Montauk Highway?
Correct, in either direction.
All right. So for instance, for those persons traveling, I guess it would be east. If you want, if you want to go south of William Floyd, you're going down Alita and then using Mastic Boulevard to continue with your attempt to go south. Is that correct? Am I reading there right? So then this is an area that's passing all around the two frontages of this, of this parcel. The Taco Bell and the other fast food entity that you just mentioned, are they also along Alita?
Correct, yes.
And I know that, I know that I have seen, not at, not at those locations, but at this location, delivery is not being, not being in a parking lot and, you know, hand-trucked in, but rather the truck coming in and actually blocking the roadways. That, of course, is an issue with that apparently, you know, obviously. But that type of, that type of activity usually occurs when the lot itself isn't sufficient for, for the, for the, for the use that the lot is undergoing. So I would agree with Mr. Mazarella that the board, and I would think especially the planning board, is going to look hard as to what type of deliveries can be accepted and when, and the timing of those deliveries.
Understood.
All right. So again, I'll ask, you're not familiar with any, any studies that have been done concerning either traffic circulation on the parcel or surrounding the parcel to determine whether or not the parcel can even accommodate the drive-through window that you've, that you, that the applicant is proposing?
I am not, no.
All right. I do see that the application attempts to increase the use of the outside of the building in that it's removing 10 feet from the building to accommodate the drive-through. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And that is for the queuing area.
Correct.
Getting back to the queuing area, the other issue, as Mr. Mazarella spoke, that I saw also is that, I mean, we've seen this pattern before, that in fact Taco Bell is, uses it at other locations. But once that queue gets to 10 or 11 cars, the parking lot is blocked off. And then you have cars stopped at entrances and exits because there's no longer access in or out and there's no access to the, to the parking area. I, I would expect, I would expect that, that some sort of traffic study would speak to those issues. And I have a feeling that, that it's planning that will, will perform that. But I think it's, it certainly is a reasonable consideration of this board, considering you're here for relief concerning the drive-through in question, which is going to affect all of what goes on, on the parcel.
Okay, understood.
All right. Is there anything further from the board on this application? Do we have anyone wishing to speak on the application or do we have any written comments? No written comments and no one wishing to speak? Yes, Mr. Vega?
I don't have any speakers on this case.
All right. Again, for those of you wishing to speak on an application, please be sure to rename yourself with you the case number you are here to speak on. Any questions, use the chat and Q and A section. With regard to this application, Mr. Vigliata, was there anything further on behalf of the applicant?
Nope, that is it.
All right. If the board has nothing further, I'll ask for a motion.
A motion, close and hold.
A motion by Mr. Mazarella, seconded by Mr. Lindsay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Case numbers five and six, 90 Route 25A Inc., care of Andrew Malguanera, 713 Main Street, Port Jefferson. Property is located on the south side of North Country Road, 151 feet east of Honey Lane, Miller Place. Applicant requests permission for existing detached sign located less than the required 12 feet from North Country Road, zero feet existing. Also side yard variance for existing wood deck.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vega.
I have Andrew Malguanera for the applicant.
Very good. Mr. Malguanera, we can see you, can you hear us?
Again.
Welcome. Let's get you sworn. John?
Oh, yes. I solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Very good. We'll start with the planner's testimony on the application.
The applicant seeks setback variance for existing ground sign and side yard variance for existing deck. And the property is located on the south side of New York State Route 25A, 151 feet east of Honey Lane in the Hamlet of Miller Place and home to Orto's Restaurant. It is noted that the approved site plan for the restaurant dates back to 1982, which depicts the sign nearly on the property line. And the multi-tenant office building at the corner of North Country Road and Honey Lane also enjoys a ground sign, which is approximately three feet from the property line and also depicted on its approved site plan. Staff further notes the presence of a significant conifer and evergreen hedge wherein placing the sign with a conforming setback may significantly reduce its ability to communicate the restaurant from the west. And with regard to the deck, staff notes it is at grade level and heavily screened with evergreen vegetation from the adjacent office use. The application is a type-two action.
For the record, then, those are the comments of the board's planner, Mr. Malguanera. Doesn't look like you have to add much here, but what would you like to say?
Chris put it perfectly. I'll just add that we got historic approval on May 5th for the sign and the deck as well.
Excellent. The board is familiar with this area. We know that the North Country Road in this vicinity was recently redone. There were parking, there's parking just on the roadway side of the fence that's existing on the property. So the fence is, it would be behind both the parking and the fence that exists.
Correct.
All right. Is there anything further from the board? Do we have any further comment on the application? Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to grant the application type-two presented.
All right, that would be for case number five. Mr. Lindsay moves to grant the application type-two as presented, seconded by Mr. Burksen, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, case number six, also in the name of 90 Route 25A Inc., does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to grant the application as presented, type-two.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lindsay, seconded by Mr. Lazarus, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Case numbers nine, 10, and 11, Ashley Holmes of Long Island, PO Box 507, Port Jefferson Station, New York. Property is located on the west side of Hallock Landing Road, 204 feet south of Jonathan's Path, Rocky Point. Applicant requests division of a parcel into three plots, one, two, and three, requiring lot area, lot frontage, minimum and total side yard variances for a proposed one-family dwelling on Lot 1. Lot area, lot frontage, minimum and total side yard variances for a proposed one-family dwelling on Lot 2. And Lot 3 requires no variances for the proposed one-family dwelling. The lot conforms.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vega.
I have Larry Davis for the applicant.
Very good. Mr. Davis, we can see you. Are you able to hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Very good, we can. Just, let's start with your appearance for the record, please.
Certainly. Larry Davis, 175 Oak Street, Pacha, New York, yeah.
All right. Mr. Davis, you are going in and out. I did catch most of that, so we're gonna, we'll work with it and see how it goes. I'm going to start with Mr. Reed's testimony on his review of the application.
The subject property is located on the west side of Hallock Landing Road, 113 feet south of Jonathan's Path in the Hamlet of Rocky Point. The applicant is proposing to divide the 67,200 square foot parcel into three lots ranging from 19,019 square feet to 28,937 square feet. Access to the lots intended via Hallock Landing Road for lots 1 and 2 and Jonathan's Path for Lot 3. It is noted that the subject parcel was part It is noted that the subject parcel was part of a two lot land division approved by the planning board in 1995 and was subject to covenants and restrictions, including no further subdivision of lots. In 2018, the applicant filed an application to repeal the covenant prohibiting further subdivision, which was denied by the planning board. And the matter was apparently subject to a stipulation of settlement by both the town and applicant. Property is located within the B1 residence district, requiring minimum lot size of 22,500 square feet. Proposal does not conform to the underlying zoning requirement. There are a total of 78 improved residential lots within the 500 foot radius. Thirty-five percent of the lots have frontage conformance with the application and 68% enjoy lot area conformance. In terms of the proposed dwelling size on lots one and two, it is significant in size for a 91 foot wide lot at 50 feet in width. This dwelling does not conform to the minimum or total side yard of the B1 residence district, nor the recommendation recommend recommended side yards of the small lot ordinance. In Section 85883 of Town Code, which is 18 feet and 40 feet respectively, in consideration for same is recommended, should the board look favorably on the application. The applicant's land division plan depicts proposed clearing envelopes at 40% for lots one, two, and three. While staff finds there is little usable space for the potential homeowners, especially on lot one, and that the applicant is apparently amenable to said clearing, staff has incorporated same in the recommended mitigation measures. As per sequel, the application is an unlisted action with a negative decoration recommended.
Thank you then for the record. That's that is the testimony of the board's planner, Christopher Reed. Mr. Davis, what would you like to tell us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Mr. Reed indicated, there's a prior history on on these lots. As he indicated, there had been a land division in 1995 by the planning board. And as you can see on the map that's before you right now, those were the division lines. The problem with those division lines is that they should never have been granted this way because there was not enough rear yard to meet the code. And therefore, that land division was done improperly. So what happened is we went back to the drawing board, went for the relief of covenant for the planning board, and ended up in a stipulation of settlement. Now, the this application comes from that stipulation of settlement. The last paragraph, and Mr. Reed did allude to the stipulation of settlement, but the last paragraph you need to hear because that is exactly what this application is. It provides, there will be no further clearance of the parcels in excess of 40%. Any further subdivision shall be in conformance with the plan as set forth in Schedule B here too. And the map that is in front of you is the map that is part of that stipulation of settlement. So those lots came about from the stipulation and the settlement between the town of Brookhaven and my client. So we're here before you asking for those lots in accordance with that stipulation of settlement. Mr. Reed did indicate, though, that lot number one had an issue with the 40% clearing. We did recognize that. I did speak to my client. We have enough front yard setback that we can move the house forward to have a rear yard and still comply with the 40% clearing that is part of the stipulation and settlement and also part of this application. So if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Yes, Mr. Davis, you did not speak to the size of the building envelope of the houses. I think it's your practice to present to us envelopes that meet the small lot ordinance. In this instance, I know this is not your survey, but it does not, in fact, very closely infringes on the the clearing or the vegetated areas that are not supposed to be cleared. And I'm wondering what the applicant's position is on that.
Well, I just addressed that with lot number one, Mr. Chairman. We're going to be moving the house forward as I have plenty of setback there from the street to be able to move it forward, still comply with our application and still comply with the the clear.
No, I see that. I'm referencing the side yard setbacks.
Oh, as far as the side yard. Mr. Chairman, they're not that far off from the small lot ordinance. As Mr. Reed indicated, it's 18 minimum, 40 total. We have a 16.6 minimum with a 36.66 total, which is not far off the code. And the neighborhood pretty much is all kinds of small lots, especially around where these properties are located. So they do comply with what's with the character, the general character and nature of the neighborhood.
All right. So applicant proposes to to remain with the side yards proposed in the survey.
Please.
All right. Does the board have questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lindsay.
Good afternoon, Larry.
Good afternoon, Mr. Lindsay. How are you?
Very good, very good. Um, Chair, about the side yards. So you're you're asking basically for a 3.36 total?
3.34 total, yes.
Almost four total? Okay, the homeowner for that four feet, wouldn't the wouldn't reduce the house two feet on each side to comply?
We would prefer not to. And if and if you look at the surveys, the way that lots one and two are configured, we took the short side yards between those two houses to be built to allow for the larger, which meets the code on the small lot ordinance of 18, to the houses that are existing on either side. So we shortened up the two between for the for the two new houses to be built as not to infringe on our neighbors.
Okay, so so there is 91 feet wide, no, no, 50 feet wide, I'm looking at.
What which 50 feet wide?
What is on the left side of lot one?
The house itself is a 50 foot white house. That's correct, Mr. Lindsay.
There is a house on the other side of lot one?
There is.
Um, yes, here we go. We have we have the aerial coming up now.
Okay, I can see that now. So have they said anything about that that clearing, a lot difference?
My client did not. My client did not indicate anything to that, Mr. Lindsay.
Excuse me?
My client did not indicate anything like that to me at all.
Okay, is there other houses in the neighborhood that have that 16 foot?
You have many that are much, much smaller. As a matter of fact, there are quite a few 40 foot lots that have been built. If you look directly to the east, you'll see some small lots on the other side, on Quail Road, on Cherry Road, on Satinwood Road. There are a lot of houses that have smaller than 16 foot lot side yards. That's why we feel we're conforming neighborhood.
Okay, are they are they B1 or are they A1? Is the whole neighborhood the same?
We're B1. I don't know what if there is a division on Hallock Lane, Hallock Landing Road or not. I'm not sure if that's a different zoning classification or not.
Because you know, we run into that sometimes.
Yes.
Across the street could be different than the other one. Um, and and they're willing to, they're gonna move the houses up to conform with the 40%?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, and with the stipulation that that moved the property lines to allow the third house with the town is what I'm assuming, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have no further questions as of right now, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on the board? Do we have any communication on this application?
Yes, I have a few letters.
Yes, we'll take those, Ms. Cardy.
Okay. I have an email from Karen and Malcolm Wade of 130 Hallock Landing Road. If the zoning variance is granted, the new house on lot one will be within 20 feet of my property line. That is not acceptable. When we bought our home, there was one home on the lot that is now proposed to be two. That's not fair to us to change the zoning rules. It will take away from our lifestyle. We have lived all these years. They will come in and take down all the beautiful trees that are part of the landscape and barrier between properties. I urge you to consider to do what is right and not grant this variance. That would not be fair to all of the surrounding neighbors who have lived here for many years. We bought and have stayed in our homes because we love them. We have followed the zoning laws. Ashley Holmes should not have should have to do the same. This will ruin what we have worked for, a home with privacy and peaceful surroundings. This also is not fair that the meeting will be going on while people have are at work. Something as important as this should be scheduled when people can attend a meeting. If this variance is granted, you will be disappointing a lot of law abiding residents. Please don't ruin our neighborhood and my home life. Please respond to let me know that you've received my email and my opinion will be heard. I also have a letter, email from John Easterbrook. A good rule of urban planning is that busier roads should have large lots. Therefore, subdividing this half acre lot would not be wise, especially on this road that already generally has larger lots with a few exceptions. Three more driveways on this already dangerous road will increase the risk to pedestrian traffic. Alternatively, a compromise could be to require the developer to install sidewalks and ensure a way for the future homeowners to maintain them. Pavers or stamped concrete might fit into the neighborhood better than a classic gray cement sidewalk. Jane Bonner commissioned a sidewalk study for this very road approximately five years ago. That study could be referenced. I'm guessing the builder wants to subdivide since the currently proposed structure isn't getting any bites. I bet it's because it's not very nice looking, especially for the price. And he attached a real estate listing. I also have an email from William Roach. He says, attached is a letter written by Susan Langford and signed by some of our neighbors against various variances, thus zoning change. The letter is signed by 10 people. And it states, we, the undersigned residents who are entitled to voice objection to this zoning request due to our proximity to the proposed structures, request that the town zoning board consider our objections noted below for your consideration in determining a negative or affirmative decision. The proposed height and size of the proposed homes is vastly inconsistent with the existing nearby residences. Squeezing two large high structures on undersized lots with reduced footage on 20 on 23 sides will give the appearance of two large box stores on a rural country road. The proposed structure will totally obscure the spacious and panoramic views unique to this area. Cramming the two large homes on reduced sized lots will require clear cutting all the existing natural vegetation buffers on the front and sides of the existing lots, giving the proposed structures a multi-dwelling urban appearance that is counter to the rural quality of the entire Rocky Point area. Rocky Point is noted for its rural appeal and has been a hallmark of this countrylike area for nearly 100 years. Our half acre zoning is a critical element contributing to our property value and makes it a coveted and critical element in attracting prospective home buyers. We bring your attention to the quite bold request for several variances on diminishing the lot size in front sides and obviously clear cut buffers. Ashley is not requesting a small innocuous consideration of the variance. They are boldly requesting a complete makeover of the size, rural quality, and appeal of the country town. Um, oh, and this was actually signed by more than 10 people, 11, 12, 13, 14, about 15 people in the neighborhood. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Cardy. Mr. Vega, do we have any speakers?
Mr. Chairman, I have zero speakers on this case.
All right. Mr. Davis, those were the surrounding property owners to the west and I guess north and south of the parcel. Did you have any responsive comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, one thing that I was neglectful in letting the board know when I did my presentation is that the combination of these lots is only 300 square feet shy of zoning of 22,500 per lot. We have 67,300, 200 square feet. That's 300 square feet shy of three legal sized lots under the B1 zoning. The other part of it is the neighbors, regardless of whether I'm one houses or one house or two house, we're keeping the minimum side yard under B1 to those neighbors, which is 20 feet. So I could build one house and have a 20 foot side yard, and it would be the same as if I built two houses with a 20 foot side yard. We're trying to help the neighbors. We're trying to do the right thing for the community, and we're trying to comply with the stipulation of settlement that we entered into with the town of Brookhaven. To reconfigure the lots would be not in accordance with the agreement that's been made. And that's all we're asking for at this point is for the the board to act favorably on our application, Mr. Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. What what you just mentioned was that the the proposed dwellings are holding 20 feet to the outside residences, but not internally. What from one to the other, they're both holding your proposing 16 feet.
Correct.
And I did see that stipulation that you mentioned earlier, the stipulation provided that that the the litigation concerning the the relief of covenant action that the stipulation provided for the potential that the applicant could seek three lots through approval from this board. But the lots as depicted in the survey that the applicant is proposing to us today.
Correct. They comply exactly as they are presented today.
All right. But specifically on that issue, the the stipulation provided for the lots not for and and provided for the clearing limits, but not for the actual size of the homes. In fact, the size of the homes are not even with the building envelopes are not. If you look at Schedule B, I think it is, there's no bill, there's no building envelopes drawn on those at all.
Mine has building envelopes, Mr. Chairman, and that's exactly what is on the board right now. That's exactly what mine show.
Do I did not see proposed houses?
My copy has proposed houses, Mr. Chairman, and that's what I was referring to.
Let me ask Ms. Cardy if we have a copy for file on in the file currently. Just go with someone.
Sorry for the confusion, Mr. Chairman.
No problem. It would be an 11 or 12 page stipulation of settlement. Did I? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'm actually looking at the amended covenants that were part of the step.
All right, so.
I apologize.
That's all right. So the still ordered stipulation of settlement, which has everyone's signature on it, it is Exhibit B. It shows us and you probably can't, it's not going to come. But yeah, again, you're showing us the 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 lots being proposed, but nothing on the lots. And the point only being, and at the time, there was an agreement on the the issue and granting the applicant the right to come to the board, to this board for consideration of a three lot land division. There was no agreement as to what could go on the lots. It was just an agreement that the lots could come before this board.
Correct. That I was I was looking at the the filed copy of the Declaration of the Amended Covenants that were filed as part of the stipulation. And that shows the configuration as it's presented to you today.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anything further from the board on the application? Does the board have a motion?
Yes, surely I'd like to close the whole.
Motion is by Mr. Lindsay to close and hold. I'll take the second from Mr. Wisdom. All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Case numbers 12 and 13, 855 Montauk Highway LLC, 222 Middle Country Road, Smithtown. Properties located on the east side, William Floyd Parkway, 267 feet north of Montauk Highway, south side McGraw Street and west side Grand Avenue Shirley. Applicant requests maximum floor area ratio, 20% permitted, 23% proposed in conjunction with proposed one story addition to existing building. Also, height variances for proposed wall signs on west and south elevations exceeding the 18 foot high permitted. 22.5 foot high proposed on each elevation. Permission for one of said signs to exceed the 36 square feet permitted, 74.9 square feet is proposed. Height variance for proposed 25 foot high, 112 square foot brown sign.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vega.
I have Julia Viola for the applicant. I also have three other speakers.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good afternoon. Can we have your appearance for the record, please?
Sure. Julia Viola for the applicant, Sir Tilman Ballen, 100 Motor Parkway, Hapug, New York, 11788.
Thank you, Ms. Viola. Did you intend to bring any other persons up to to add to your presentation to us or do you?
Yes, yes. And I would like to introduce. And I would like to introduce them as well.
So let me bring them up first before you introduce them. Mr. Vega, you can do that.
I will actually do my presentation first, then Mr. Damianus, who is the principal of 855 Montauk Highway LLC, will also give a short presentation, and then Mr. Shea will conclude our overall presentation today.
Oh, so we have to hear from Mr. Shea again?
Yes, unfortunately.
All right. Would you like to start your presentation now, or did you wish to have all of these individuals present as participants?
I would like them to have...
Oh, I see, Mr. Shea, that's that. Very good. Well, it looks like everyone's here. I have Mr. Damianus muted, Mr. Shea is muted. You can, if you'd like, they're all, they are participants now. You can commence your presentation.
Okay. Well, as Mr. Reed's memo pointed out, that we previously reviewed, that the applicant proposes two modifications to the existing 25,459-square-foot one-story building C in the Floyd Harbor Center by adding one-story 1,270-square-foot addition on the southeast side of the existing building C and one-story 1,222-square-foot loading dock extending from the west side of the existing building C to the east side of the building B to accommodate a new tenant, Aldi grocery store. As such, the applicant is only seeking an increase of FAR of 1%, which is insubstantial and cannot be achieved by alternative feasible method for the applicant to pursue because the loading dock is a necessity for the grocery store. And unfortunately, Building C and Building B were originally designed without an adequate loading dock, and the one-story addition on the southeast side of Building C is required to make the proposed store operational. The applicant is also seeking variances for a 22.5-foot-high wall sign on the west elevation, 22.5-foot-high wall sign on the south elevation, and a sign area variance for the secondary 74.9-square-foot wall sign. These relaxations are consistent with other relaxations traditionally granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals. In fact, this board has set a precedent on September 11, 2019, in the matter of Serota Brooktown 1 and 2 LLC, when it granted variances for the 29-foot, 10 inches high and 189-square-foot Planet Fitness wall sign on the east elevation in Stony Brook. The relief previously granted by the board exceeds the relief requested by the applicant as part of this application. The applicant also submits that no undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood by granting of such variance request. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by alternative feasible method for the applicant to pursue because these particular wall signs were designed in accordance with Aldi's corporate design criteria and specifications, taking into consideration the size and height of Building C and the location of Building C in the shopping center. The proposed wall signs are appropriately placed on the facade of Building C, and their size in relation to the size of the Building C is not substantial. In fact, the fully operational Aldi stores in Selden and Patchogue obtained certificates of compliance for the 24-foot-high and 27.8-foot-high wall signs, when the proposed wall signs are only 22.5 feet high. The applicant is also seeking a relief for the 25-foot-high and 112-square-foot ground sign, which will replace the existing pylon sign in the same location. There is a precedent set by this board on November 17, 2010, in the matter of RNF Patchogue LLC, where the board granted a variance for a 35-foot-high and 196-square-foot ground sign advertising the Rayma and Flanagan and ShopRite buildings in the 6.9-acre commercial center. The size of that commercial center is similar to the size of the subject site, which is 6.3 acres. The proposed ground sign is designed to be backlit and is 22.1 feet away from Montauk Highway. The portion of the subject site where the ground sign is proposed is on J2 business, and backlighting is permitted in J2 business. The applicant also submits that no undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood by granting of such variance because the height and the area of the ground sign are consistent with the size of the ground signs in other commercial centers in the neighborhood. In fact, the other shopping centers located approximately a mile from the subject property, such as Southport Shopping Center, Majestic Corners, Lighthouse Commons, all have backlit pylon signs on their property. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by a feasible alternative due to the design and location of the buildings in the shopping center. If you look at the site plan, Buildings A, B, and C are far removed from Montauk Highway and do not have great visibility from Montauk Highway or William Floyd Parkway. Additionally, given that the applicant proposes only one ground sign, when it could have had two ground signs, and the wall signs with Aldi's name are only on the south and west elevations of Building C, which is far removed from Montauk Highway, the proposed Aldi store does not have a good visibility, and the proposed ground sign is essentially the only identification for the proposed building. For that reason, the requested variance for the ground sign, as well as backlighting for the ground sign, are very important to the applicant, and at this point is a necessity. As you probably know, the Floyd Harbor Center has been largely vacant for many years and currently has only two tenants, Applebee's and AT&amp;T. In fact, the store in Building C that Aldi is looking to rent has never been occupied since it was built 15 years ago. As such, the new property owner would like to attract Class A tenants and thus must provide an adequate signage to make the shopping center attractive to new tenants and customers and to make it successful. Although the applicant is seeking a 52% relaxation for the ground sign height and 72% relaxation for the area, the requested variance is not substantial. The variance substantiality is determined by the impact the variance may have and not simply the numerical size or percentage of the variance. In our case, the approval of the requested relief will not have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Quite the contrary, it will provide a great visual appeal to prospective customers and adequately identify the tenants of the shopping center. Lastly, the applicant had recently presented this project to the Chamber of Commerce of Mastix and Shareless Inc., which indicated its support in its letter, which was submitted to this board. Thus, it is our position that the benefit to the applicant, if the requested relief is granted, outweighs the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. As such, the applicant respectfully requests your favorable consideration of the requested variance relief.
Thank you, Ms. Viola. We will take the planner's testimony now.
The applicant seeks area variances for proposed additions and relief for signage for the Floyd Harbor Retail Shopping Center, located on the north side of Montauk Highway, 188 feet east of William Floyd Parkway in the Hamlet of Shirley. It is noted that site plan approval for the Floyd Harbor Shopping Center was granted by the planning board in 2003. In conjunction with site plan approval, the planning board imposed covenants and restrictions, including, not limited to the following, a maximum gross floor area of 62,800 square feet shall be permitted in conjunction with the development of the parcel. Modifications to the above shall require the review and approval of the planning board. It is noted that the proposal for gross floor area is at 64,173 square feet. With regard to relief for floor area ratio, the parcel currently enjoys FAR at 22.5%. The applicant intends to provide for two additions to the 25,459-square-foot building depicted as C on the site plan for the proposed Aldi grocer. The addition on the west side is intended at 1,222 square feet, with the one on the east side at 1,270 square feet, wherein collectively, the proposed additions account for a total of 64,173 square feet, an increase of FAR of 1%. With regard to the signage, the applicant intends to advertise Aldi on both the west and south elevations, while one of the signs conforms to the 80-square-foot area requirement permitted by the sign ordinance. The second wall sign is limited in size at 36 square feet, and in terms of height, both signs exceed the maximum permitted at 18 feet for wall signs by four and a half feet. The existing ground sign is intended to be replaced with a 25-foot-high, 112-square-foot monument-style sign. It is noted that in 2007, the planning board granted permission for an 18-foot-high, 68.5-square-foot ground sign, with a condition that lighting shall be downlighting, no internal lighting permitted. Subsequently, a certificate of zoning compliance 250417 was issued for a 17-foot-high, 68.5-square-foot sign. And the sign currently enjoys downlighting. With regard to same, the property is part of the Montauk Highway corridor study and land use plan for Mastix and Shirley Phase 2, adopted by the town board in 2009. An Appendix B1 of the plan pertains to sign requirements. Section B6 of the sign requirement section reveals that materials, colors, and shapes of proposed or replacement signs shall be compatible throughout the Montauk Highway Transitional Overlay District. Wood or woodlike signs with direct lighting shall be required throughout the district. While the wall signs are intended with goose neck lighting, the ground sign rendering prepared by Persona reveals backlit LED sign panels, as well as an exterior consisting of hardy plank, brick accents, and a brick base. Staff notes hardy plank is a woodlike material, and with the exception of the brick accents, it is the opinion of staff that the sign material would not be in contradiction to the goals of the sign ordinance. Staff further notes the existing sign has a brick base as well, which obtained ACO with 2007 planning board mandates. There is no objection to the brick base. With regard to the relief, while the request is significant with relaxations over 50%, staff notes the premises is 6.3 acres in size with multi-tenants, and as such, certain relief above the 12-foot height and 32-square-foot area would appear to be warranted, further indicated by the 2007 planning board decision. However, 25 feet may not be the minimum necessary to communicate the shopping center. While it is noted that the Southport Shopping Center is located within 500 feet of the subject parcel and enjoys a 29-foot-high, 8-inch-high sign with 218 square feet area, the shopping center is four times the size at 28 acres with approximately 32 tenants. The rendering of the proposed sign reveals an oversized sign panel for Starbucks in space for future tenants. Further, the header revealing the address and shopping center name is seven feet in height. Consideration should be given for a sign 20 feet in height. There is no objection for the 112-square-feet area request. In addition to the request, the relief site plan approval is also required by the planning board. The application is a type 2 action. Should the board look favorably, staff recommends a 20-foot height limitation on the ground sign, as well as a prohibition on the backlit wall and ground signs.
For the record, then, those are the comments of the board's planner. Ms. Viola, did you have responsive comments, or are we holding those for other persons?
No, I have no other comments, and I think Mr. Damianus would like to give a short presentation at this time.
Very good. Mr. Damianus, I only see your last name, not your first. And I see a number of persons at the table, so could you just let us know specifically which of the Damianus family you are, please?
I'm waiting. Can you see me?
Yes, but the distance is far, so it's hard for us to make it out.
Okay, can you see me now?
Yes.
Hi, how are you?
Very good.
Bear with me, I'm not used to these Zoom meetings. And I'm sure you probably aren't that much more familiar than I am as well.
While you're getting ready, Mr. Damianus, let me ask if I can have the board's attorneys swear you in.
Sure.
Good afternoon. You solemn swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
We could just start with your name and address, please.
This is Chairman and members of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Good afternoon, and thank you for hearing our application today. My name is Chris Damianus, Principal of 855 Montauk Highway LLC, the applicant.
Good to see you, Chris.
Good to see you, Mr. Chairman. My family have continuously been commercial landlords for over 52 years in the town of Brookhaven. We currently have commercial rental properties in Stony Brook, Sotocat, Port Jefferson Station, Patrog, Centum Riches, and now Shirley. We are proud of all of our projects, and every single one of them have been successful. While we don't perform as much ground-up construction as we have in the past, we specialize in turning around troubled, underperforming assets. With our know-how, hard work, and capital, we have turned multiple troubled assets into real estate that we, the town, and the communities involved, can all be proud of. This shopping center, we all know, is trouble. We purchased it two years ago from the estate of Joseph Perisi, the original developer. It currently is 85% vacant, with only two tenants, Applebee's and AT&amp;T. The center was built approximately 13 years ago, and the store that Aldi's is looking to rent in Building C has never been occupied since it was built. That fact should tell us all something. The center, while beautiful and in a great location at the corner of William Floyd Parkway and Montauk Highway, has its challenges. It is neither a small strip center nor a large big-box type of retail center. It was not designed to have a major tenant, which is exactly what it needs for the balance of the vacant stores to rent. There was no provision for a tailboard loading dock. It was set far away from the major street being Montauk Highway, and to boot, it was constructed as three separate individual buildings. We sought out who would be the perfect anchor tenant for the center, that being Aldi's. If it's any indication of community support for Aldi's coming to the Shirley marketplace, Councilman Panico's Facebook page since yesterday has posted overwhelming support for this application. I believe there are over 180 likes with over 100, excuse me, with over 99 positive comments so far. In addition, we have the support of the Chamber of Commerce. In addition, we have the support of the Chamber of Commerce of the Mastics in Shirley. The world of retail is reeling right now, and has been since well before the pandemic began. Please give us the tools we need to make this shopping center successful and competitive with the other retail centers in the area. Help us give the community what it obviously desires. Please grant these variances we need to proceed to the planning board and send a clear signal that the town of Brookhaven will work with property owners for all the right reasons. Thank you for your time and consideration, and we are prepared to answer any questions that you or the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Damianus. Certainly, this board recognizes that the actions taken by you will be a good step forward for this property, and we certainly will consider the variances sawed very seriously on behalf of the applicant. So thank you very much for coming and speaking to us today.
Thank you.
Ms. Viola, what further comment did you have for us? Did you wish to have Mr. Shea speak now?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. De Chance, members of the board, J. Timothy Shea, Jr., Mr. Tillman Ballen, one hundred and more, Parkway for the applicant. I just would like to address the issue of the interior-lit pylon sign. It seems to be one of the issues that Mr. Reed touched upon and is in his conclusions that the prohibition on backlit sightings should be part of this grant, if in fact it is granted. His rationale for the same is the adoption of the Montauk Highway Corridor Study and Land Use Plan for Mastic and Shirley Phase Two, adopted by the town board in two thousand and nine. The adoption of a land use plan or corridor study does not in and of itself implement the findings of that study. What it does is it basically gives an overlay of some issues that might be coming up and desires of the planning staff and the local community. The way that you implement a land use plan is by effectuating a change of zone consistent with the findings and goals of that land use plan, or by instituting a overlay district. In this case, there were three areas that were studied. There was the Grand Avenue Neighborhood Center, which this parcel is located in, the Hawkins Neighborhood Center, and the Twin Ponds Neighborhood Center. Pursuant to the two thousand and nine land use plan and within the findings, it says that the two thousand and four plan included recommended amendments to the zoning code and associated zone changes for groups and parcels within the study area to create three neighborhood centers and foster a sense of identity and community. It then further goes on to say that the town board rezoned the majority of the parcels in two areas, that being the Grand Avenue Neighborhood Center and the Twin Ponds Neighborhood Center. When they rezoned parcels in the Grand Avenue Center, they specifically excluded the parcel in which this application is based upon and kept that zoning as J-two. Under the rules of statutory construction, by keeping it J-two, you must assume that they did so on purpose and that we are under the J-two zoning code. And in fact, the variances sought for height are based upon the J-two zoning code, not the J-six zoning code. If the town board had intended for this parcel to be subject to the same requirements as the neighboring parcels that are J-six zoned, and under the J-six zoning, there is a specific prohibition against interior-lit signs, the town board would have rezoned this parcel to J-six as they did with the other parcels. The town board also had a second bite at the apple pursuant to the two thousand and nine land use plan. At that time, they could have done one of two things. They could have, at that point, rezoned this parcel to J-six, like some of the surrounding parcels, or they could have instituted an overlay district, which is what they did with the Montauk Highway Transitional Area Overlay District for Mastic and Shirley, which covers at least eighty and maybe over a hundred lots in the immediate area, concentrating at the Hawkins Neighborhood Center as recommended within the land use plan in two thousand and nine. The town board, again, specifically did not include this parcel within that overlay district. Thus, there is absolutely nothing within the town code that would justify taking the interior-lit sign and that prohibition that was previously granted. In this particular case, there has been an exterior-lit sign on the premises that, to be quite blunt, is not very good-looking. And we have proposed a substantial upgrade to the sign, and it is interior-lit. There is nothing within the J-two code or in the land use plan that would affect this property and mandate that this board prohibit interior-lit signs. So we would object to any prohibition to interior-lit signs based upon the law, the zoning of the property, and the land use plan as adopted, and I'll stop at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Ms. Viola, I want you to note for the record that we have a copy of the Declaration of Covenants and Restrictions that accompanied the planning board grant made back in the early two thousands. The declarations and covenants are dated February eleven, two thousand and five. Paragraph seven of those declarations indicate a maximum gross floor area of sixty-two thousand eight hundred square feet shall be permitted in connection with the development of the subject parcel, and goes on with very specific words. Modifications to the above shall require a review and approval of the planning board. So may I ask either one of you, has the application been made to the planning board for a modification of the square footage of the buildings?
You want to take it, Yulia?
Sure. We have made the application to the planning board, and we did not include the request for amendment of covenant seven pursuant to the square footage. But the planning board actually, planning department issued comments, and we are currently responding to the comments. One of the comments of the planning department was an amendment of the application, so we are planning to include this request as part of the submission of the amended application.
All right. Have you received anything from the planning board staff or board indicating that they would prefer that we decide the issue?
We have not.
If I may.
Mr. Shea, yes.
The way procedurally, you know, town of Brookhaven works is that they always send us to the Board of Appeals first before they hear an application. In this case, we understood and acknowledged that we will also need relief from the planning board. So if the Board of Appeals is inclined to grant the application with regard to the FAR on the condition that we obtain the same relief or similar relief or required relief from the covenant to effectuate that FAR, we're more than happy to accept such a condition.
How close are you to agreeing, Dave, with the planning board?
I would say probably, at least, I'm going to say probably at least sixty days.
All right.
And then the planning board won't hear the application, and they're going to want to hear it as a whole until the Board of Appeals makes their decision.
Makes these decisions. With regard, I want to point out also, with regard to the signage, the planning board used very specific language in the covenants and restrictions, consistently use the word "shall," "shall not exceed" certain heights or certain square footages. We've not seen that in the past, and it leads me to believe that an amendment to that planning board application may also include on the same issue what you're seeking here in terms of the height. We both know that signage under the code rests with this board. However, this, we're talking in the early two thousands, and at that time, the planning board was taking action beyond what specifically the code would normally allow them to take. So inasmuch as they first acted on this application, that also may have to be brought up with them. I'm pointing that out. If you want to bring that up with them, I think that maybe.
And we would have no issue with, again, a condition that this is subject to approval by the planning board.
All right, so talk to us a little bit about the ground sign. There's some certainly disagreement between the board's planner and the applicant concerning the height and the manner of illumination, but there was a suggestion in the planner's testimony that because there's seven feet of just name and address on the ground sign, that consideration could be made to reducing the height of the ground sign to twenty feet from twenty-five, still maintaining the same height of the stores sought to be communicated by the sign. So has there been any discussion at all on that issue and any willingness to consider that request?
Yes, we've discussed it with our client, and I'll let him answer that question.
Mr. Damianus, you're still with us. If you can unmute yourself, we'll be happy to hear you on that issue. There you go.
Okay. Yes, we've looked at that, and we are willing to drop the overall height of the sign down to twenty feet, keeping all the rest of the same proportions the same. But we still feel that for this sign to be adequately illuminated, we need it to be internally illuminated. We just cannot illuminate a sign of this size, which we require, with, you know, these gooseneck lights. Again, it doesn't work. You create a hotspot where the light shines down, and you just don't adequately get the lighting that you require. Again, this shopping center is a little unique. It's pushed way back from Montauk Highway, and it's got beautiful trees in the parking lot, and we need to have visibility, and hence, this sign. You can see the existing sign on, if you're looking at the same thing that I'm looking at, which is the existing pylon sign. It is just an absolutely terrible-looking sign that just doesn't function well. It's actually very odd-looking. And this, and really doesn't even belong in front of the shopping center. The sign that we've designed here, we feel looks like it belongs with the shopping center and would give us the visibility and the lighting that we require. And while it may not be consistent with that land use plan, the vast majority of the shopping centers in the area are backlit signs, and that's our competition. So we're not asking for any more or any less than anybody else. We're just asking for that internally illuminated. And we will agree to drop down the size to comply there.
Thank you, Mr. Damianus. As an aside, on behalf of, or in support of the application, the board has examples of other signs similar to what you're proposing. One of them includes the Publix. What ability does your company have to invite, to get Publix to come up to New York?
We were actually looking at some other typical signs, just to get some ideas. And so we, you know, we were down in Florida. We liked that sign. And so we kind of used it, and we handed it off to our architect, and he used all the design elements of our shopping center to go along with this sign that we're proposing.
Thank you.
I have, listen, I am very happy with Aldi's.
As you should be, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Shea, Ms. Viola, in light of your client's testimony, is there, are you willing to amend the application?
Yes, we'll amend it to a twenty-foot maximum height.
All right, then, for the board, I'll ask them for a motion with regard to case number thirteen, altering, modifying the height variance for the ground sign from twenty-five-foot-high, one hundred and twelve-square-foot sign to twenty-feet-high, one hundred and twelve-square-foot.
So moved.
Motion and second amendment made, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, gentlemen, I have nothing further for you. Do we have anyone wishing to speak on the application?
Mr. Chair, I have a Bruno Lorenko. I'm not sure if he's here to observe, but I also have a Michael Marinus.
All right, why don't we bring whoever is left there wishing to speak on the application up at the same time? While you're doing that, Ms. Recordy, do we have anything written to the board?
I have one letter from Beth Wall, Chamber President, Chamber of Commerce of the Mastics and Shirley, Inc. Our Chamber of Commerce recently met with the Damianus Realty Group, who gave a presentation about the proposed Aldi's grocery store. He reviewed the site plan and answered any questions that we posed. We are in favor of this much-needed anchor store for the Floyd Harbor Shopping Center and look forward to welcoming Aldi's to our community.
Very good. Thank you.
I have Michael Marinus, but he is still muted. I'm not sure if he wants to speak.
Mr. Marinus, if you can just unmute yourself, please.
Hi, I'm the engineer for the applicant, Michael Marinus. I was just here to answer questions.
Very good. I don't think we have anything for you, sir. Mr. Shea, Ms. Viola, did you have anything, did you want Mr. Marinus to speak to us specifically on any issue?
No, thank you.
I don't think so.
All right, do we have anyone further, Mr. Vega?
I have a Bruno Lorenko. I'm not sure.
All right, Mr. Lorenko is here, but he is muted, and I don't have video. So, Mr. Lorenko, did you wish to speak? It seems to me you've taken off your, you're no longer muted. Can you hear us, sir?
I can. Bruno Lorenko, I'm Director of Real Estate for Aldi. I'm just here to answer any questions specific to Aldi, and just welcome to answer anything that the board may have, and looking forward to being part of the community.
Thank you very much for attending, sir. Was there anything further from the board on the application? All right, does the board have a motion?
Chairman, I move to approve the application as amended, type-two.
All right, so let's just take these one at a time, please. Case number twelve, in the name of eight-five-five Montauk Highway LLC. The motion, the request is for maximum floor area ratio for the existing building. Motion is by Mr. Burksen to grant it the application as a type-two action.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mazarella, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with regard to case number thirteen. Also, in the name of eight-five-five Montauk Highway LLC, as amended, to reduce the height of the ground sign from twenty-five feet to twenty feet. Does the board have a motion?
Move to approve the application as amended, type-two.
Second.
Again, motion by Mr. Burksen, seconded by Mr. Lindsay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Gentlemen, good luck with the venture.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, case numbers fourteen and fifteen, CJC Home Builders Corp., care of CKG Permit Service, Inc., PO Box eighty-seven, Belleport. Property is located on the northeast corner, Wave Crest Drive and Clermont Drive, Mastic Beach. Applicant requests division of a parcel into two plots, one and two, requiring lot area, lot frontage, both streets, front yard setback from both streets, rear yard, and minimum side yard variances for existing one-family dwelling on plot one, built under permit number one-nine-B, one-two-nine-two-six-one. Also, lot area, lot frontage, front yard setback, rear yard, and minimum and total side yard variances for proposed one-family dwelling on lot two.
Mr. Chairman, I have Larry Davis for the applicant. I also have a speaker. I'm not sure if she's the client. Her name's Catherine O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. We see you. Can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes. With regard to Ms. Sullivan, is that the applicant?
No, it is not. I believe she is a neighbor.
All right. Then let's start with your appearance and your presentation, sir. Actually, we'll take your appearance, and maybe we'll take Mr. Reed's testimony.
Terrific. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Larry Davis, one-seventy-five Oak Street, Patchogue, New York, for the applicant.
Property is located on the northeast corner, Wave Crest Drive and Clermont Drive, in the ham on a Mastic beach. And the applicant is proposing to divide the twenty-two thousand three hundred and twenty-two-square-foot parcel into two lots of eleven thousand one hundred and sixty-one square feet. Parcel is improved with a two-story dwelling, which enjoys a permit for same and is to remain on the land division plan as lot one. And a new two-story dwelling is proposed designated as lot two, with access to the proposed lots intended via Clermont Drive. Property is in the A-one Residence District, requiring minimum lot size of forty thousand square feet, and the lot does not conform to the A-one lot area requirement. In nineteen eighty-nine, the town board rezoned this area to A-one to increase the lot area needed for residential development with goals including, but not limited to, groundwater and surface water preservation. The applicant apparently acquired the subject parcel in twenty-two thousand three hundred and twenty-two. The applicant apparently acquired the subject parcel in 2019. With regard to health department requirements, the parcel is located within hydrogeological zone six, requiring a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet. And both lots do not conform to said requirement. It is noted that the parcel is on a file map known as Mastic Acres, Unit 7, which was filed in 1946 and is exempt meeting health department requirement. There are a total of 76 improved residential lots within the 500-foot radius. Forty-three percent or 33 lots have area conformance with the application. And 86% or 63 lots enjoy frontage conformance. Further, the parcel is approximately 1,400 feet to wetlands associated with Lons Creek, attributable of the Forge River. And in 2006, the river was included on New York State's list of impaired water. And to address the impairment, the town implemented the Forge River Management Plan, adopted in 2012, which characterizes the watershed and 14 subwatersheds and contains 56 recommendations to protect and improve the Forge River ecosystem. The plan reveals that the parcel is within the two-to-five-year contributing area, which is the amount of time groundwater will travel to the river. The following is an excerpt from the plan that the distance from the estuary affects nitrogen loading in two ways. Effluent from onsite systems that are further inland travels further vertically than systems close to the estuary. In these locations, some of the affluent nitrogen is lost to deep aquifers rather than traveling in shallow groundwater to the estuary. Secondly, many homes close to the estuary are at elevations that there is little unsaturated soil between the onsite system and groundwater. Page 11-54. As such, the closer to the river nitrogen-related impacts increase. Test hole information on the land division plan reveals the depth to groundwater to be 6.4 feet below grade. Page 1157 on the plan also reveals that the second-largest nitrogen input to the Forge River is onsite wastewater treatment systems that release nitrogen to groundwater and then flows into the Forge River. And reducing groundwater nitrogen inputs to the estuary is one of the most effective ways to improve water quality in the Forge River. And two lots, which are approximately one-quarter the lot size of the A1 Lot Area Requirement, is anticipated to result in nitrogen loading increases from the onsite sewage disposal systems. It is noted that in the matter of Burns, case number 17 and 18 of October 17, 2018, the board approved a two-lot land division of a 27,501-square-foot parcel into two lots of 13,620 square feet and 13,881 square feet, wherein the grant was subject to the installation of alternative or innovated onsite water treatment systems. And the Burns property is also on Wave Crest Drive, approximately 625 feet east of the subject parcel. In terms of dwelling size, while the proposal does not conform to certain bulk requirement of the A1 District, the proposal conforms to the requirements depicted in 8583 of Town Code for lots with 100 feet of frontage. And it is the opinion of staff that a 2006, 67-square-foot dwelling is appropriate for the proposed lots. As per sequel, the application is on listed action with a negative declaration recommended.
For the record, then, those are the comments of the board's planner. Mr. Davis, what would you like to present here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Mr. Reed indicated, this is a land division into two lots of 11,161 square feet each. As you can see by the radius map that's in front of you, this very much conforms to the surrounding community and the lots that are within the area. He did give a conformity report. I have confirmed his numbers at 43% of lot area conformance and 63% of lot frontage conformance. As far as the neighborhood goes, the interesting thing is if you look directly across the street on Clermont, the it would be the northwest corner of Clermont and Wave Crest Drive, you see, see a similarly sized parcel that has two, two parcels that's been divided into two parcels. Those have a on the Suffolk County tax map, a point something, which indicates to me that that was divided at some point and that the zoning board at some time granted that variance. And directly to the west of that, you'll see three lots on the corner of Woodcut Drive and Wave Crest Drive that are exactly the same point something, which again would indicate that there was zoning board action on those parcels. I did some research and the properties on Clermont and Wave Crest, the two that are directly across the street, were built by the same builder in 1976. So the zoning was B then, so there's only one assumption that can be made and that that this was part of a zoning board decision that granted those two lots and similarly the three lots across the street. As you get into the neighborhood a little bit and you go just outside the radius map, you get to the corner of Biltmore Drive and Pine Way Drive. And on the the northwest corner of Pine Way and Biltmore, I did a land division before this board that was exactly the same-sized parcel that this into two lots that was approved by this board. It was approximately 15 years ago. I did the hearing as I remember it. Similarly, on the southwest corner of Biltmore and Pine Way, there is another land division of a corner that mirrors this exact subdivision. So what we're asking for is exactly what's been granted in on this same subdivision map, by the way. It may be outside my radius map, but it is on the same subdivision map, asking for the same relief that has been granted previously. And as around the area, it doesn't seem that there are any more corners that can be divided in such a manner. So we are asking the board to grant this application as they have granted others in the past. If the board has questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Burksen.
Hi, Larry.
Good afternoon, Mr. Burks. And how are you?
I'm good. So Larry, this, there's a house that's already built on the, on that property?
It's under construction, Mr. Burksen.
And it was, a permit for that house was issued without the necessity of an application to this board?
That's correct. It's a, it was a single and separate parcel. So my client decided he'd get a permit and start building a house while he went for the land division as to save time and energies.
So it was his own decision to place the house, the, it's under construction at the far end of this lot, is that right?
That's correct.
So hasn't he created his own problem here?
No, not at all. This was the intent all along. What, while he was able to get a building permit, he said, let me get a house started. We are in one of the best real estate markets this, this, this island has ever seen and to take advantage of it. He started a house that conformed with the lot at the time that he, that he went for the building permit. But this was his design all along, was to do a land division on it.
So the house that is under construction, what type of sanitary system is is part of that house?
It's been approved and it's been built with a septic tank and a cesspool.
So it doesn't comply with the, the more advanced systems that that Mr. Reed was addressing and discussing in his report?
Well, those systems are only required with it when you are building within 500 feet of a wetlands. We are not within 500 feet of the wetlands, so therefore that system was not required on this application. And likewise, if the board seeks a favorable decision for me on the other lot, we would be, excuse me, required to build a sanitary system with a cesspool and a septic tank.
So it's your position that there's conformity in the area with respect to this lot after it's subdivided?
That's correct.
And that's consistent with Mr. Reed's numbers, is that right?
It is, yes, sir.
And given the, the given the current location of the houses, wouldn't it be more reasonable to require those advanced sanitary systems in this, in under these circumstances?
Well, they are not required at this time. I know.
They're not required by the Board of Health, is that right?
That, that's correct, or the town of Brookhaven. We do not fall within the purview of a requirement for an IA system as we are not within 500 feet of a designated wetland.
But it might be a reasonable condition for this board to impose.
That's a matter of opinion, Mr. Burksen. Whether it's reasonable or not, we can agree to disagree.
Okay. I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there anything further from the board on the application? Mr. Davis, I know that I don't think that you started with this client, but you do recognize this may have been the first time that we have seen this, but with an intended land division and moving to instead of filing in immediately, obtaining a permit to get a jump on construction, there is a, there's, there's a risk to that, to that type of activity. And of course, you know, the risk is that the ultimate desire for a land division may never may never be granted. And the applicant would, would end up with a dwelling on one end of a parcel. In this instance, especially where there is a request for lot area and a quarter, I think of what the present zoning would would require and, and with an application that requires 13 variances to, to permit the land division to occur. There certainly, this board has some concern with that. You know that when we consider a land division, we also, we, in, in, in doing so and imposing certain conditions, many times we, we have specific placement for the homes. In this instance, there was not. I only mentioned this for you to point out to the client because of the risk associated with taking these actions without without first coming to the zoning board. There may, there certainly could be a situation where a home is built just like this on the, on the very end of a parcel and there's a, there's a land division denial from the zoning board. And in that instance, the, the result would, would be a parcel that, that is lopsided, would not have a house centered on it and would, would be problemsome both for the town and for the, for the applicant themselves. You, you, you understand, I don't think you've seen this, like, this, this type of procedure done many times in the past or if at all.
I, Mr. Chairman, I can tell you that the placement of the house conformed to the zoning where this board did not have to act on its present placement. So whether it was there, if it was denied, we are still not asking for any relief. If it were denied, there's no relief to be requested on that house and it may sit there. And very frequently, by the way, you do have houses that are setback, it's under the code from the street and they have huge rear yards. This one was designed in that manner.
This one would have a huge rear side yard, not a rear yard.
Yes, that's correct.
The house fronts on Clermont. I, I just, I just, I make that statement in the hopes that you might caution this builder to, to refrain from that urgency. At this stage, you know that this board can act as sometimes as quickly as needed. And I can only say that that, that is the best option or way to go. Having said that.
Mr. Chairman, that is noted, but I do, I would like to point out to the board that regardless of whether there was one house or two house, this house would have fronted on Clermont either way because Wave Crest is a heavily traveled road with a double yellow line. So therefore, a driveway coming out on to Wave Crest would not have been conducive for this property. And it's, it's better situated on Clermont Drive. So I just want to make sure you understand that point as well because I don't know how well you know that street. I know that street for 35 years. I know how, what, how heavily traveled it is. And I did do, by the way, this property that Mr. Reed alluded to, I did that hearing and I did that variance. So I know that street for many, many, many years, as I indicated.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Is there anything further from the board? I do believe we have written communication and a speaker on this application. Maybe we can take one to the communication person. I'll take, yes, so Ms. Riccardi will read those for the record.
Okay, I have two identical emails. One's from James McGrath of 216 Holland Avenue in Medford. The other one is from Catherine O'Sullivan, 6 Clermont Drive, Mastic Beach. As I said, they're identical. It says, "We are opposed to the subdivision of the existing lot for the following reasons. One, there is no single and separate status consistent with or allowing the splitting of this lot. Two, the existing lot is approximately 10,000 square feet. It is already far below the required 40,000 square feet specified as a minimum for A1 zoning requirements. The proposal is to make it into two 5,000-square-foot lots. The two lots to the north are approximately the same size as the existing individual lot. Although the lots directly to the east are smaller as they follow filed map lines, they must have been single and separate. The remaining two easterly lots, fronting on Wave Crest and then Biltmore, are exactly the same size as the subject undivided lot. Although there are some smaller lots on the south side of Wave Crest, most are approximately the same size as the subject undivided property. Therefore, there is no compelling reason why the subject undivided lot should be further subdivided to create two lots of approximately 5,000 square feet in a zone requiring 40,000 square feet. The applicant has a permit and has constructed a house on the plot in such a fashion and location such that it is convenient to the plan of splitting the lot. It appears that there was an anticipation of Board of Appeals approval of the split. Since there are many lots in the area at approximately the same size as the subject parcel, if approved, this could set a precedent for the application of many 10,000-square-foot lots into two 5,000-square-foot lots in a zoning district requiring 40,000-square-foot lots and is obviously against the intent of the town board zoning regulations. There is no public purpose in allowing the subdivision. There is no loss on the part of the applicant as he was given a permit for the use of the existing unsubdivided parcel. And there is no hardship requiring remediation. I would appreciate it if the above could be read and considered in your decision."
I will note for the record, while there were many accuracies in the statement we just heard, I think what was blaring was the fact that the lot in question is 22,322 square feet with a request for lot sizes of 11,161 square feet. I believe that and this is the problem with building one and then going to the zoning board, that these residents believe that the remaining 1, 11,000-square-foot lot was being divided into two.
Yeah.
And that's, that's how I take that. I know that we have one of the speakers, one speaker who is the author of one of those written communications and will clarify with them. But, Mr. Davis, you are free to, to respond to those if you wish.
Well, one thing I'd like to note and I appreciate you correcting that. I was able to look, this is O'Sullivan, is that lot number 24 on the radius map. Her property is .3 acres. We're at .26 acres. It's very similar in size to what we are asking for. So there, and by the way, yes, we're in A1, but if you look at the radius map, there is not one single lot in the entire radius map that conforms to A1 zoning. In fact, there were quite a few 50-foot frontages, more so than I usually see on a radius map. Especially on Woodcut Drive, on Clermont Drive, and there's quite a few on Biltmore. So this is a lot, this is an area where undersized lots are the norm. And we are asking for nothing more than what is already pretty much in the neighborhood.
All right, we will take the speakers now. Mr. Vega, have they been promoted?
Mr. Chairman, promoting Ms. O'Sullivan. Ms. O'Sullivan can hear. I think she can speak. It's just her video is not on.
All right, I'm not seeing even the speaker box from Ms. O'Sullivan. Ms. O'Sullivan, can you hear us? I don't, I don't see that she's a participant here. I don't, I don't see that she's a participant here.
I know that her mute is off. I have a box for her.
Do you have one? Because I don't, I don't have anything. Ms. O'Sullivan, are you able to hear us? Can I ask you, please, to, could you, if you're having trouble getting on and you can unmute yourself, could you please utilize the chat function and we can assist you? Mr. Vega, was there anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, there is no one else.
All right. Let's just give Ms. O'Sullivan a moment.
And by the way, Mr. Chairman, while we're waiting for Ms. O'Sullivan, I will go back to my, my client and have that discussion with him that, that we just had, and, and I will make sure that he gets that message.
I appreciate that very much. I'm actually looking for Ms. O'Sullivan as an attendee now, and I'm not-
She is a pan, panelist.
She's a panelist. I do see Catherine O'Sullivan. I don't, there's no, Ms. O'Sullivan, it appears as though your, your mute is not on, therefore you should be able to, we should be able to hear you. Can you hear us? All right, I'm not sure what we can do. I don't mind holding this for a hearing. If Mr. Vega, there's a method that we can use last, at the last hearing to have Ms. O'Sullivan call in.
I can unless she responds, or I can see a response. There's no point of having her call in. She's not using the chat feature that I can answer.
All right, Ms. O'Sullivan, just last opportunity, if, could you please use the chat feature? We can, we can have you participate in the hearing by calling in as opposed to coming on as a panelist in that you appear to be either through Wi-Fi issue or technology issue unable to, to be promoted. Mr. Davis, do you have anything further, further into the calendar with us?
I know, this is my, my last hearing, Mr. Chairman.
This is your last hearing?
Yes. Sorry to say.
Didn't we do this at the last hearing?
We did. I was just going to remind you of that. It's been my hearings all the time.
I am not seeing Ms. O'Sullivan. I'm going to ask the board for motion to, I'll ask the board for a motion. Sorry, I have two people speaking.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to move to close and hold.
Motion is by Mr. Burksen, to close and hold. I'll take the second by Mr. Lindsay. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Davis, I will tell you that I know that I've moved to close. If Ms. O'Sullivan appears, we will attempt to contact you and reopen just to hear what she has to say, in all fairness. If not, this is, and if you don't hear from us, it means that there was no further attempt. Fair enough. Mr. Davis, are you gone now also? All right then, Mr. Davis is gone. That would conclude the 2:00 PM interval calendar. While it is beyond, while it's almost 5:00 and the board has not yet commenced a 4:00 PM interval calendar, I'm going to ask the board for motion for a brief recess, let's say, to resume at 5:00 PM.
Go move.
Motion and second have been made, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, I think though, then we can start. I'm going to ask the board for motion to resume the hearing. Motion and second have been made, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries? All right, before we resume with the 4:00 PM interval, I want everyone who are sitting as attendees to please, if you haven't done so already, to rename yourself to include the case number that you're interested in speaking on. That is the way that we can identify when to, to pull you up as panelist. Please do that now, and we will, the hearing is now open. We can continue this hearing with case number 19.
Do you want to just read the one postponement?
Yes, I'm sorry. There is a postponement from off the holdover calendar. Ms. Ricci will read, read that and we'll make the motion.
It's case number 37 originally of August 26, 2020, Albert DeLuca requesting October 7.
This is board of the motion. Motion and second have been made, all in favor? Any opposed motion carries? Now we can resume with case number 19.
Maria Cronitas, 17 Joan Avenue Center each, located on the east side of Joan Avenue, 120 feet north of Powers Avenue Center each. Applicant requests certificate of existing use for a two-family dwelling.
Ms. Cronitas, we can see you. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Yes, very good, very good. Thank you for waiting to be heard today. Can we just start by having you give your attention to the board's attorney and we'll swear you in. All right, then you name and address, please.
Maria Cronitas, 17 Joan Avenue, Center each, New York, 11720.
All right. Ms. Cronitas, the board is familiar with the reason why you're here. You, you're asking the board to, to grant your request for a certificate of existing use for a two-family dwelling. What you're saying is that, that the structure predated the code.
Well, um, we bought the house, we bought our house in February of 1996, and I believe the woman we bought the house from was the second owner of the home. She was here for over 45 years. My house was built in 1947. We bought in 96. The man that sold us the house, Mr. James Ellsworth from Strat Maurice Equities, was very aware that the home was a two-family home, or at least had a second kitchen upstairs. And this is how we purchased our home. We also had an inspector come and visit the home on July 29th, Mr. Blasmas. And he also reported, I have submitted his, his report of July was lost, but I have submitted one from, from May that emphasizes that the kitchen is from the early 1950s. So, um, this is, um, this is how we bought the home, and that's why, um, we are, we figure we'll make it as is, a true family home. We had also asked for a correction letter to the CO of 1996, just before we bought our home, that mentioned the second kitchen, but it did not mention it as a two-family home. So when we purchased our home, we were under the understanding that it had a second kitchen. But we didn't, we had my father living with us until February. He stayed with me and then he moved into a home. He passed away with COVID in April. But then we decided to move on and legalize the house as, as is, as the way we found it.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Cronitas. So, so I want you to understand, because I know some of this may be complicated too, but in order to be entitled to the certificate of existing use, you have to show us that the house was built before the code was, was adopted, which was 1937. And we both can agree the house is built in 47. So then the, the alternatively, you can show us that the house was, was, was a legal use under the, the, under the residence district that it was in at the time, and that the CO, the CO or the, the certifications for the house are not in your possession and were maybe lost in a fire in the 50s within, within Town Hall. So do you know what the zoning for this parcel was in 47 when it was constructed?
I think it was a, a single family, I'm guessing though, because the only, the woman that lived here, she had bought it like this in the early 50s. So, but the zoning said, "Single family home."
Yeah, the zoning, the zoning was likely a C-zone, or, or, and certainly would allow only a single-family dwelling. Understand, I want you to understand that, for instance, if it was a single-family zoned location and someone placed a stove on the second floor and made a kitchen, the passage of time doesn't, doesn't legalize the kitchen. The passage of time does nothing more than bring you here eventually to see whether or not you can meet the requirements of the certificate of existing use. I do want to go through some of the background to it. You mentioned earlier that there was a certificate of zoning compliance issued back in 2000-
No, in 96, there was one.
96. Just bear with me a second. I have a couple of documents.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vega.
I just wanted to inform you that Ms. Jennifer Leeds is the expediter on this, and she's here now.
Very good. I didn't know that we had a, an expediter. Ms. Leeds, I can see you. Can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, please, let's, let's get you sworn first.
I'm only here if Maria wants my help. I did the, the paperwork for her. She's handling the hearing, but I-
All right.
You could swear me in, go ahead.
Ms. Doyle.
Ms. O'Sullivan, swear the truth, the whole truth about the truth.
I did.
All right, Ms. Leeds, and I apologize. I didn't know that you were, to, to some extent, representing the applicant, otherwise I wouldn't have started with her.
No, no, I wasn't. I, I was watching because she wanted to handle it herself, but I, I just wanted to pop on to just give her a little assistance. She did submit a letter from John Giove of Giove Funeral Homes. When he was a young boy, he was very familiar with the house. It was a friend's house, and he was in that house. I believe his letter, I don't have it handy, but I feel like he said it was like 54 or 55, that he was actually in that house, and it was a two-family house. He has a signed letter notarized.
It would, to the extent that there was a kitchen or a stove on the second floor?
That there was two families living in the house. And yes, the kitchen upstairs was there, the full kitchen. If you look at old pictures, you can see, but just even by the cabinets, that's the original kitchen from back then. Nothing has, has changed with the cabinetry.
All right, so what I went through with Ms. Cronitas, who's still with us, is that she could show us that the house was built prior to the inception of the code in 1937, or show us, or show us that the kitchen was installed and it was a permitted use under the zoning classification that that, that the parcel existed in between 37 and 59, and that she doesn't have the certificate, and maybe it was burnt in the town fire. So what I'm finding is that it was zoned residentially, which would have prohibited two-family use, and that's where, that's where you, that's where you came in. Ms. Cronitas did mention a CCC Certificate of Zoning Compliance 11603 issued January 2, 1986. It was issued to the prior owner who had been represented by Sal Malguanera at that point. And I do have a handwritten letter from Ms. Cronitas dated, dated October 2nd, 2009, addressed to the town of Brookhaven, and, and it states, "I'm requesting that a correction be made to the certificate of zoning, zoning compliance, as it mentions that the residence contains a 10 by 20 roofed over patio, while the survey has, it says that includes porch. Please make the correction." So, Ms. Cronitas, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Do you remember writing that letter?
Not really, I'm sorry.
All right, but let, let me ask you, does this look like, it's gonna be hard for you to see.
Yes, that's my signature, I saw.
You saw that already, huh?
I did.
All right. So, so initially, I might want to ask, you wanted them to correct the CCC by making sure that the roofed over patio was identified as an enclosed porch. You didn't mention the two-family nature of the house. Why was that?
I was never aware that it was not considered a two-family home.
Well, when the CCC said one family, one and a half story, 33 by 49 irregular residence, was that?
There were, there were discrepancies, Mr. Chairman. There were discrepancies whether sometimes it mentioned the second kitchen, other times it didn't mention it. So I was, I wasn't sure what it included until now. I was actually shocked to find out that it wasn't considered, the second kitchen wasn't considered part of the home.
I've made the records, the prior records that were filed in the house, part of the record in this, for this proceeding. I will also state, there's a sworn affidavit from Salvatore Malguanera dated December 13, 1995, where he, on behalf of the owner at that time, identified the dwelling as a one-family dwelling. I do note, and as you pointed out, that there were inspections of the parcel, and the inspections of the parcel indicate that this, that the, that the stove appears to have, the stove on the second story appears to have been installed at the time the house was built, with the same era. That's, that's the inspection report that you mentioned before, right?
Yes.
All right, I do have the inspection report, and again, we've made this part of the record. Inspection report from May 4 of 2020, we're in the Building Department Inspector, whose name I can't identify by the signature notes, as first comment, kitchen at second floor appears original from the 50s. But in terms of the proof, I was trying to go, go bring you through the proof that would be required to, for entitlement to a CCC. And that's the reason why we looked up the prior records and, and asked you the questions that we did. I do have your affidavit in support of the application from Jim.
Yes.
Boy, is that L. Ellen Truth?
It's L-E-N-T-R-U-T-H. James Ostrow.
We've made that part of the record. I will, I'm sure that we look at that and consider it prior to issuing a decision on the application.
And, and the Giove, Arthur Giove.
I'm looking for that one now. You did mention it-
There is a letter, it was attached to the affidavit. He's 87 years old, and he, his family did not want me to fill out the affidavit, so I submitted the letter that he had given me.
I, I do, I do remember seeing it, so while I don't see that it was sent to, to, to the zoning office, it may be part of the building department file. I'm just paging through it.
I have a copy, I can scan into Lori.
All right, let me just see that I, that I have it first. I have the old aerials, photos. No, I, I do have Jennifer, your letter of February 18, and also February 17, I think it's attached. I have Arthur Giove's, yes, in the Building Department records, which we've made part of the file, the February 4, 2020 letter of Arthur Giove, who who indicates to us that he has personal knowledge and observation at that home on 17 Joan Avenue, and it has a second kitchen on the second floor by visiting the original residence of the home in 57. So we have all of that. We're making it part of the record. Ms. Cronitas, was there anything further you wanted to add here?
No, I just, that's all.
All right. Ms. Leeds?
No, that's it, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anything from the board on the application? Do we have any speakers or any communication apart from what was just mentioned? Hearing none. I'll ask the board for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the application?
Second.
All right. All right, so there's a motion by Mr. Lazar to approve. I just went through a bunch of documents indicating whether or not the applicant is entitled to a CEU for a two-family dwelling. I do have the motion on the floor, Mr. Lazar makes it, Mr. Lindsay seconded. Is there, is, is anyone else in favor of that motion? All right, Mr. Lazar, with that, maybe the board needs to have a discussion with regard to the application. I'm going to ask if you could be so kind as to, to withdraw that motion. I'll make a motion to close and hold, and we can discuss it during deliberation.
Withdrawn.
Thank you. And the motion, motion to, is made and seconded to withdraw, all in favor? Any opposed motion carries? Motion is to close and hold. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries? Thank you.
Case number 21, Jamie Bush, 833 North Los Angeles Boulevard.
Los Angeles Boulevard, Los Angeles, California. Properties located on the east side of Colonial Drive, 1,400 feet south of Colonial Drive, East Patchogue. Applicant requests renewal of special permit for pre-existing floating home.
Mr. Chair, I have Tim Shea for the applicant.
Mr. Shea, welcome back.
Hello.
Your appearance for the record, please.
Jay Timothy Shea Jr., Sotomayor Ballin, 100 Motor Parkway, Hopout, New York.
What would you like, thank you, Mr. Shea. What would you like to tell us here?
I'll just be very brief. This houseboat has been in existence on this particular mooring site since 1975. There were a number of special permits, including the last one granted April 26, 2016. The houseboat is not your mother's houseboat, so to speak, or your grandmother's. I don't know if this was included in the submission, but I'm going to turn around and look to, just let you see a copy of, of the picture of the houseboat as it exists. The, the applicant recited it, improved the windows. The structure has remained the same. So it really is a beautiful, beautiful houseboat. He does reside in Los Angeles a significant amount of time of the year, but comes back to Long Island every summer to enjoy the water and the houseboat itself. We did submit with our application the septic tank certification entered by John Bracco, architect, together with the wetlands permit for the houseboat, which is good until 2022. We asked the board, renew the application, and, and I really don't have much else further to say.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Let me ask you, Mr. Shea. All right. Yes, Mr. Lindsay.
Yes. Good evening. Um, and how long has it, has it been there again?
Since 1975.
1975. And, and is he the only one that uses that?
Uh, he is the only one that uses it right now. Yes. He purchased it, but it's been there since 1975.
Okay. And it's, and it's well-kept?
Oh, very well-kept.
Okay. And neighbors have no complaints?
No. It's been there for 45 years.
Okay. Okay. It's a, it's a long time. Okay. I have no further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Shea, since the last extension of the special permit, have there been, to your knowledge, any complaints or any emergency response to the, to the houseboat?
Not to the, not to the best of my knowledge. No complaints, no emergency responses.
And does it undergo any regular or periodic inspections, for instance, for sanitary or any other purpose?
It will have to be recertified prior to the next special permit application. Furthermore, prior to the next special permit application, should it be granted, we would have to renew our wetlands permit, which has specific conditions with regard to the upkeep of the boat itself.
Very good. Okay. The town records indicate ownership by an LLC that's in Florida, not California. Do you, could you tell us or enlighten us as to who AMPIX Sunset Harbor LLC is?
That would be, I'm, I gotta assume that that is Jamie Bush's LLC.
Do we have, to your knowledge, a consent on behalf of that entity? And if we.
Okay. The, the LLC is the overall property owner, but the application is made in the name of Jamie Bush. He's the individual owner of the houseboat itself.
All right. And no violations exist currently?
Correct. With regard to the houseboat, we can speak definitively.
Thank you. Is there anything further from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Wisdom?
So if, if we wait until Tim gets the rest of that paperwork, we could close and hold it and bring it back? Is that what?
No, we have that paperwork. Those special permits from waterways and septic certification are already part of the application package.
All right. Very good. I know that. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any communication or anyone wishing to speak?
I have no other speakers.
All right. If there's nothing further from the board, I'll take a motion. I understand the application is subject to Chapter 81. The board is empowered to issue special permits for a period of up to five years.
Chair, I make a motion to approve the application.
All right. That would be subject to Chapter 81 for a period of five years by Mr. Mazarella, seconded by, was that Mr. Wisdom? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
You, too.
Case number 22, Edward and Aaron Coats, 28 Evergreen Avenue, Port Jefferson Station, located on the west side of Evergreen Avenue, 340 feet south of Lincoln Street, Port Jefferson Station. Applicant requests relief of clearing limits imposed by the Board of Zoning Appeals' decision of July 25, 2007. 70% allowed, 77.4% requested.
Mr. Chair, I have Ralph Elsasser for the, for the applicant. I also have the applicant, Aaron Coats.
All right. Why don't you promote them both?
I'm having difficulty promoting.
Last couple of hearings, there has been some delay in the promotion process.
I have missed Coats, but I keep promoting Mr. Elsasser.
Actually, don't even see Ms. Coats.
Here we go. No. Okay.
Chairman, just curious, is, in terms of the order, is who's next? Who's case is next?
For this application, I believe it would be Mr.
Wisdom.
Yes.
So this was an assigned one? I'm sorry.
No, it wasn't a someone. It just fell.
So, okay, so.
Ralph, can you hear us?
Can we ask Ralph to call in?
No, he.
I like that option because it moves us along, but is he getting close?
He's up here. There we go. Ralph, can you hear us?
He's here, yes. All right. I did see him. He's temporarily gone, I think, while up, and he's back. Very good. Mr. Elsasser?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ralph Elsasser for the applicant, Mr. and Mrs. Coats.
Thank you, Ralph. Let's, I'm going to ask you to, just to give your attention to John Doyle. We'll have you sworn.
Thank you, sir. I do, Mr. Doyle. Thank you.
Very good. And we'll start with the planner's testimony.
Property is located on the west side of Evergreen Avenue, 340 feet south of Lincoln Street, in the ham of Port Jefferson Station. And the property is known as Lot 2 of a two-lot land division known as Schultz Holding Corp., case number 7 and 8 of July 25, 2007. And the board imposed covenants and restrictions as part of the 2007 grant, including maximum clearing of natural vegetation of 70%. And the applicant seeks relief of the imposed clearing limit to 77.4%. And the increase in clearing appears to be associated with the installation of a proposed swim pool. At the time of the land division endeavor, the parcel was vacant, enjoying a typical mix of pine oak vegetation. It is the opinion of staff that the 7% increase is not substantial. It is noted that the parcel is not in a pine barren zone, and no significant environmental impact is anticipated with the requested relief. And should the, the board should be cognizant that the all-the-lot part of the 2007 land division has a 70% clearing limit as well, which may be susceptible to similar relief. And should be, should the board be compelled to grant the application, and the increase in clearing should require the filing of a new covenant and be properly reported at the county clerk's office, and the application being a type-two action?
All right. Then for the, for the record, that is a testimony of the board's planner, Mr. Elsasser. Good to see you. What would you like to tell us here?
Basically, Mr. Chairman, as Mr. Reed had mentioned, and I feel the same way, it is not a substantial request. And for a proposed and groundswimming pool, as you can see, there is not much of a yard, you know, as far as backyard goes, but they have a patio, and this is about the only place you've been putting the pool. And this home is surrounded on the one side and the rear of nothing but woods. So, and the yard is just beautiful the way they've done it. And matter of fact, there is a lot of other growth in there as far as shrubbery and stuff that isn't even on the survey, but I understand they don't count that, so.
All right. Thank you, sir. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wisdom?
Hi, Mr. Wisdom.
How you doing, Ralph? So looking at it from Google Maps, it's, and I can actually see that it's, it's, it is cleared, quite cleared. And there are all the properties in the area that have large pools and everything in the backyard and everything, and their yards are very clear. Would you say this is in, in, in order for the whole north neighborhood?
I, Mr., I have to tell you, Mr. Wisdom, this is probably has more trees on it than most of the properties in. Yeah.
Because he's got some in the back, way in the back of the house.
Yes. Yeah. The biggest part of this is cleared, is the front yard. Okay? Because I don't know what the overhead shows, but there is plenty of trees in that rear yard where that paved patio is all around.
And I see everything around it also. Is that a paper street alongside of the house?
I believe so. Yes. Garfield Street is a paper street. Yes.
Okay. I have nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Wisdom. Is there anything further from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lazar.
Um. How are you? A little bit of an inconsistency. Maybe it's, I have my glasses on. If I took them off, then inconsistency would go away. Anyway, the site plan indicates that the existing clearing equals 76.7%.
Correct.
The proposed clearing is an additional 7% for a total proposed clearing of 77.4. And.
Yeah. It's actually, Mr., it's actually with the pool in there, it's going to go up 1%. It's actually, it's existing cleared right now 76, but with the pool, it would be 77. So. Yeah.
My point is, Mr. Reed's report starts with 70%, then grows to 77.4. Who's, who's right?
Well, what it is, is the, the clearing limit on the property originally was 70%. We're speaking 77.4, Mr. and Mr. Lazaro. And what happened is the existing clearing is 76 point something percent, I believe. And so, but with the pool put in there, it's basically going to be 77.4. So we're looking for a relief of basically 7.4%.
Mike. Let, let me further clarify, Mr. Lazar. Because that information wasn't disclosed at the time of filing, or not known by the zoning office, the planner's report was written as if the, the parcel met its current clearing limitations at 70%. Mr. Elsasser, as you know, with an existing clearing over the permitted clearing, there will be a penalty fee assessed with whatever decision this board makes. I just, I think that answers the question on this Lazar, and I apologize for interrupt.
No, it's, that was what I was getting at, because it's, it, it currently is exceeding the 70%. So I'm, I'm glad you clarified that to me. Thank you.
One second, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lazar. Is there anything further from the board? Or do we have any speakers or any written communication on the application? And Mr. Elsasser, are there any final comments on the application?
I have no final comments, Mr. Chairman, but I do believe that when we had put it in, it said basically it's 70% was what the, was required. We were requested 77.4. So we weren't trying to mislead anybody. So I just want the board to.
I understand that. No, thank you very much. Does it, whatever motion?
Mr. Chair, make a motion to grant the application as presented with the 77.4 request.
Okay.
The motion and the second that are made with the assessment of the additional penalty fee for the existing clearing, all, motion made and seconded all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Case number 23, Carrie, Kelly Monally, Care of Woodhall Expediting, 1031 Main Street, Port Jefferson, located on the west side of Fridello Street, 100 feet south of Canal Street, not open, Port Jefferson Station. Applicant requests relief of clearing limits imposed by the Board of Zoning Appeals' decision of 9/24/2002. 90% permitted, 100% cleared.
Mr. Vito, we can see you. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
I just ask you to get that you be sworn by Mr. Doyle.
Sure.
The song is where it tells the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you. Mr. Vito, your appearance for the record, please.
Amy DeVito, Woodhall Expediting, with offices at 1031 Main Street, Port Jefferson, New York, 11777.
Thank you. We'll start with the planner's testimony.
Property is located on the west side of Fridello Street, 100 feet south of Canal Street, in the ham of Port Jefferson Station. And the property is known as Lot 1 of a two-lot land division known as Carrera, case number 25 and 26 of July 31, 2002. And the board imposed covenants and restrictions as part of the 2002 grant, including maximum clearing of natural vegetation of 90% of the subject property. And the applicant seeks relief of the imposed clearing limit to 100%. Increase in clearing appears to be associated, associated with the installation of a proposed swim pool. It is noted that Lot 2 of the land division adjacent to the south of the subject parcel is encumbered with a 58% clearing limit imposed due to the significant grades and a kettle hole at that property, wherein the subject parcel does not have these environmental constraints. Staff notes 10% of the property is 836 square feet, and the property enjoys approximately 400 square feet of planted area, but same was not counted, and that it was not classified as natural vegetation. While there is a concern about eliminating a clearing limit altogether, it is the opinion of staff that encumbering an 8,03358 square foot parcel with a clearing restriction, even at 10% is not warranted. The application is a type-two action.
For the record, then, those are the comments. That's the testimony of the board's planner. Mr. Vito, what additional comment did you have for us?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my client is actually proposing a pool, which will be in front of this board if this case is approved. The, the pool will be located in the far left corner of the property, which is really the deepest part of the property and best area to install the pool, being that there is a patio and then a staircase that leads out of the rear of the home. The backyard itself is only 34 feet wide, leaving very little room to place the pool. And the, you know, reason why we are here before the board today to request relief of the covenant, the, the clearing is definitely consistent with the nature and character of the rest of the neighborhood. And as per Mr. Reed's report, the parcel, the adjacent parcel is much larger, more than twice the subject premises side, size, and obviously has a more stringent clearing limit. And additionally, the 10% clearing limit, well, sorry, 90% clearing limit, while it is not large, it, it does create an issue for my client in, in enjoying their backyard and at least having an area for, for them to have recreation and for their children to play, and in this case, to propose a pool. And I am happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Vito. Obviously, requesting at this board, ignore completely, a clearing covenant is a significant request at 100%. In this instance, I think we can agree with you, though, and agree with our planner, that imposing a covenant on a lot of this size, it's not something that we do today, and I'm not certain why it was done, when it was done. So in that regard, I think the board. in that regard, I think the board may be looking favorably on the application. We do note, however, in looking at your survey, that the pool is proposed with four foot, a four foot rear yard and a ten foot side yard that's not before us currently, but it appears as though the applicant is now fencing in more parcel than, than he owns. Did you have a discussion in that regard with the applicant? And is he, is, is the intention, of course, to bring back the fence to the property line?
Yes, that's correct. I'm not sure how that discrepancy occurred. But at the time when the fence was installed, they did believe that that was their property. I, I don't know if perhaps they, they relied on the fence contractor or if there was a confusion with looking at their survey. But I did explain to them that they were encroaching on somebody else's property, and they understand that the fence has to be moved on to the line, especially since if they are granted the application for the pool, the pool fence will be required as far as code to comply with safety.
All right. All right. Thank you very much for those comments. Is there anything further from the board? Do we have any speakers on the application? This is, we have no speakers. Does the board have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the application as submitted, conditioned upon the moving of the fence to the, to the property line.
That motion is by Mr. Burksen, seconded by Mr. Wisdom. All in favor?
I.
Any opposed?
There would be a type two.
Thank you, Mr. Burksen. As a type two action. Mr. Burksen completed that motion. It was seconded by Mr. Wisdom. Again, all in favor?
I.
Any, any opposed motion carries? Thank you.
Thank you.
Number twenty four, Nick Perita, twenty four Concord Road Shirley, located west side Concord Road, two hundred feet south of Tudor Road Shirley. Applicant requests side yard variances for two existing decks, rear yard variance for existing one story residence addition on a fifty foot lot.
Mr. Chair, I have a Laura Coletti for the applicant.
Thank you.
Can my video start?
I can hear you, Ms. Coletti. Can you hear us?
Uh, yes, I can.
Very good. We're looking for your video. Sometimes, oh, here you come. There's, there has been a delay. I did see you. I did see you pop up momentarily and then disappear again.
Again, all right.
But Mr. Elsasser did before you, so let's see. On the positive side, we do have, we can hear you.
Well, that's, that's half the battle.
The way this, the way this hearing is going, we'll be here until tomorrow. So I'm going to ask you to be kind enough to listen to the board's attorney. He's going to attempt to swear you in.
Tom, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
All right. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Laura Coletti from Impact Architecture at three ninety nine Conklin Street, Suite two oh eight in Farmingdale, New York.
Thank you. The board is familiar with the applicant's request for variances, specifically side yard variances for two decks and a rear yard for a one story addition. What would you like to tell us specifically about these structures?
Still trying to get the camera to work. Can you see me yet?
I can't see you yet, but I'm not so worried. I want you to know that we have, we have, we have an overhead, we have a survey. We, you've been sworn, your, your addition is rather modest at twelve point two by seven. We certainly are interested in the decks and whether they, whether they sit at grade or above. And whatever you can do to help us, we'd appreciate it.
Okay. Both of the decks are at grade. The clients, Colleen and Nicholas Perita, purchased the home together. They're a mother and son. They purchased the home in two thousand and seven with an apartment and these decks and the addition on the property. During the amnesty period of last year, we did legalize the apartment, because they were not aware it was not a legal apartment when they purchased the property. And then after that, we did get that approved, but pending these variances for these decks. So both decks are at grade, one on either side of the house. I imagine prior to this that they, the tenants may not have been related, so they each had their own deck space. Then they've made no real changes to this property since they purchased the house, other than painting and cleaning things up.
All right. Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lindsay.
Good evening. Um, what do they use the addition for?
That I really don't know. I think it's an addition to the lower apartment.
The lower apartment. Okay. That is legalized now?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And do you know how, I guess, were the decks there when they bought the house?
Yes.
Okay. So you don't know how long they've been there?
No. They purchased the house in two thousand and seven, so they've been there thirteen years.
Was there any complaints from anybody on the decks or the addition that you know of?
Not that I know of, no. It only came to light when they got, had the inspection for legalizing the apartment. During the amnesty program of last year.
Okay. I have no further questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsay. Is there anything further from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vega.
I just wanted to inform you that we never received the return receipts.
The green cards, yes. I did get your message, Anthony. I have them here. You can't see them, but I have them here. I'll, I'll drop them in the mail tomorrow.
All right. I'd like to see whether they could be, yes, if you drop them in the mail tomorrow, we should have them by Friday. We, of course, as you know, will hold a decision letter until receiving them. Thank you. Is there anything further on this application? Does a board have a motion?
Yes, Chair, I'd like to grant the application type two presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lindsay, seconded by Mr. Mazarella. All in favor?
I.
Any opposed motion carries?
Case number twenty six, Jeremy and Sue Kim, fifty four Long Meadow Place at Talkit, located on the west side of Long Meadow Place, three hundred and fifty one feet south of Long Meadow Place. At Talkit, applicant requests rear yard variance for a proposed sunroom.
Mr. Chair, I have Diane Laspisa for the applicant.
Thank you. Let's see if we can promote Ms. Laspisa. Mrs. Laspisa, can you hear us? Up.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you. Can I just ask you to give your attention to the board's attorney to be sworn?
You solemn swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
All right, then we'll start with your appearance.
Diana Laspisa with Moreno Expediting Services, twenty eight Edward Street, Bethpage, New York, one one seven one four.
Thank you, Ms. Laspisa. Are you here for a rear yard setback for a sunroom? What would you like to tell us specifically?
Correct. I'm here on behalf of the property owners, Jeremy and Sue Kim. And we're requesting permission to construct a one story sunroom addition. It will be unheated onto the rear of the existing dwelling. The property is zone B one, which requires a rear yard setback of sixty feet. And the proposed sunroom will be fifty six feet off of the rear yard.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
That's not the.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lazarus.
Yes. You said, to reiterate what you said, you said the, this is strictly a sunroom. It's unheated. Anything else that would be subscribed, such as running water or electrical or what?
No, no running water. As far as electric, I would imagine that they might have an outlet in there or a fan. We don't have an electrical plan for it, though, but most people do have outlets in there and, you know, and a ceiling fan or something like that. But it is separate from the house. So right now it projects off of the, it will project off of the family room. And there's an existing sliding glass door.
Okay, so it's strictly a, an open space, unheated, and the possibility of electrical, just for some convenience of some sort. Ceiling lights? Anything like that in there?
I, you know, again, we don't get specific with the electrical plan. You know, I mean, they would be required to provide an electrical certificate, so I don't know exactly if they're going to be doing a ceiling fan or, you know, high hats or something. But there usually is some form of electric in there so that they can, you know, plug in a lamp or something like that. Or have, you know, a light in there. I mean, because even though it's unheated, it's still, you know, during the season would be used at night.
Okay, I understand. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lazarus. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Grant the application as presented.
Motion by Lazarus, seconded by, and I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Mr. Burksen, all in favor?
I.
I. Opposed motion carries.
Thank you.
Twenty seven Linda Simone, two two four Stuyvesant Drive, Selden, located on the south side of Stuyvesant Drive, one hundred and fifty feet east of Charter Road, Selden. Applicant requests permission for proposed partial garage conversion to habitable space.
Mr. Chair, I have TOC Architects for the applicant.
Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay.
You, you are echoing. Do you have more than one device on?
Yes, I did. Let me shut one device off.
All right.
I should not be echoing anymore.
It's, it's better. I'll give you that. I did, I did see you promoted. Oh, there's, there's a lot of background noise, and I actually lost your video. Are you still with us? Well, I think now we're seeing what happens when school's back in session.
I'm bringing him back, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
I'm here.
Very good, sir. We can see you. Are you able to hear us now?
Yes, I hear you fine.
Thanks for coming back with us. Let me just ask you to take a moment to be sworn by the board's attorney.
Absolutely.
And Mr. Doyle, if you could do that, please.
You solemn swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
All right, then, let's just start with your appearance for the record and then your presentation, please.
Okay. Todd O'Connell, doing business at twelve hundred Veterans Highway, Hop Dog, New York, architect for the applicant, Linda, for the owner, Linda Simone.
Thank you, sir. What would you like to tell us specifically here?
The purpose of this, what we're looking to do is do a partial garage conversion. And the reason for that is just to create an extra space for mom in the house, you know, to live in. They need some extra space for mom. And that's really the only place to, to put it, is to take a portion of the garage. We'll leave in a portion of the front of the garage, basically, so we have a little storage for snow blowers, bicycles, things of that nature. But the back three quarters of the garage we're converting, so we would have a bedroom for mom in the home.
All right. Thank you. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Burksen.
So the, the space between the garage and the, I guess it's the portion of the wall that runs north, south, that's remaining garage space?
Yes, that's correct.
That little, little spot.
That little, that, that little spot is to remain garage, correct? Which also serves the purpose that it looks nice from the front when you pull up with the car and, you know, so it, plus a little storage area for the home itself as well.
Okay, and the access to this additional conversion space would be through the, through the house?
Only from inside the house, that's correct.
Okay, so it would just be windows on the outside?
That would be it.
Okay, I have, I have nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Burksen. Mr. O'Connell, because you're proposing a hundred and sixty five square, square foot area, that, that square footage does not meet the minimum requirements for an accessory apartments. I mean, my assumption is there is no kitchen intended for this area.
No, there's no kitchen. It's really just another room for mom. It's not an apartment use that we're going for.
Very good. Thank you, sir. If there's nothing further from the board, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the application as submitted type two.
Motion is by Mr. Burksen, seconded by Mr. Wisdom. All in favor?
I.
Any opposed motion carries? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Case number twenty eight, Affordable Custom Home Building Corp., care of Woodhall Expediting, located on the west side of Oakland Avenue, one hundred and forty five feet north of Lee Place Mastic. Applicant requests permission for proposed second floor of proposed one family dwelling to exceed the twelve hundred square feet permitted, twelve hundred and fifty three square feet.
Mr. Chair, I have Amy DeVito for the applicant.
Chairman? Amy DeVito, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, Mr. DeVito.
I'm really sorry.
That's all right.
UPS man is outside. It's going to be a disaster. Amy DeVito, Woodhall Expediting, ten thirty one Main Street, Port Jefferson, New York, one one seven seven seven.
Thank you, Mr. DeVito. Would you like to get the, the, yes, the package from the UPS man or bring the dog in? That's fine.
Please just give me a moment.
Okay.
Try that again. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I apologize.
No problem. I understand, Mr. DeVito, there's an intention to amend this application.
Yes. The denial was inadvertently created to read that a, the permissible square footage was twelve hundred square feet, wherein it's actually eight hundred square feet. So I'd like to amend the application to propose that we are requesting twelve hundred and fifty three square feet on the first, on the second floor area where eight hundred square feet is permitted.
Thank you. So the, the square foot proposed has not changed. The reference to the code permissions changed. That's all it's changed. Does the board have that motion?
So.
Motion and second in the middle, in favor?
I.
Any opposed motion carries? Okay, then, with regard to this application, I believe that our, our planner Christopher Reed is here to testify for us.
Parcel is located on the west side of Oakland Avenue, one hundred and forty five feet north of Lee Place in the Hamlet of Mastic. The applicant proposes to erect a two story dwelling on the ten thousand five hundred and twenty four square foot parcel with access intended via Oakland Avenue. Property is located within the A one residence district, and while the lot does not conform to the bulk requirement of the underlying zoning, parcel was determined to be single and separate. It is noted that the zoning enforcement officer revealed twelve hundred square feet is permitted. However, section eighty five, eight eight three of town code limits same to eight hundred square feet based upon the parcel's frontage of seventy five feet. It is noted that the board granted the identical relief stemming, stemming from an application known as one seventy eight Fairview Corp., case number twenty five of July one, twenty twenty, with said lot depicted as lot ninety six on the radius map. Should the board look favorably, standard residential mitigation is recommended as well as a road improvement plan for Oakland Avenue, type, the application being a type two action.
Then that is a testimony of the board's planner. Mr. DeVito, did you have any further comment for us?
I just wanted to add that the reason why we are requesting the additional square footage on the second floor is because the home being proposed on this lot is actually a high ranch, so the first floor is actually less square footage than the second floor, as the garage is included on the first floor. My client is developing this lot with the same house that we had requested on the prior approval that Mr. Reed mentioned. And just for the record, the road improvement plan has been submitted to planning and has been approved, and the road improvement permit has been issued.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Chairman.
Mr. Mazarella.
Hi, Amy. How are you?
Hi, Mr. Mazarella. Good. How are you?
Good. So in regard to the, the other dwelling, so are you saying that, is it the same, same exact model?
It actually is, yes.
It is, right. And is this, this house going to go for sale, or is it proposed to be a rental?
It's proposed to sell. My client, the builder, is a spec builder, so he'll build the home for sale.
Okay. And so is the design pretty much the high ranch? So you, you know, basically, it's going to be two stories and it's going to, I'm assuming, go straight, straight up over the, the second story. So in other words, it's going to be matching all the way around?
That's correct. I did, Mr. Mazarella, just so you know, I did submit the floor plan to Ms. Richardi for the board's review, if you did want to look at it. But yes, it's a high ranch with the first floor having the garage on it, a bedroom and a family room. And then the second floor has the dining room, living room, and then additional bedrooms. So there's more living space on the second floor because it, it houses the main, you know, dwelling areas such as the kitchen, dining room, and living room. So there's more living space on the second floor, because it, it houses the main, uh, you know, dwelling areas such as the kitchen, dining room, and living room.
Right, and it's a four-bedroom, I see.
Yes, that's correct.
I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mazarella. Is there anything further from the board? Do we have anyone wishing to speak on the application?
Mr. Chair, I have no speakers.
All right, then. I'll ask the board for a motion.
Grant the application as submitted.
Second.
Okay, motion is by, uh, Mr. Mazarella, seconded by Mr. Wisdom. Standard residential mitigation measures, type-two action. I understand the road improvement plan is in place, but that will, uh, continue as a condition. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Case number thirty, Sergio and Carrie Costanzo, thirty-five Woodville Landing Road Shoreham, located on the northeast corner Valley Way and Woodville Landing Road Shoreham. Applicant requests height variances for two existing retaining walls located in the front yard, Valley Way, varying in height from one-point-six feet to seven-point-nine feet high and three feet to eight-point-one feet high, respectively.
Mr. Chair, I have Carrie and Sergio Costanzo.
Thank you. I think I see them. Mr. and Mrs. Costanzo, can you hear us?
Yes.
Very good. Let me ask you both to give your attention to the board's attorney, John Doyle, and we'll have you sworn.
The Psalm is where to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
We do.
Very good. And the board is familiar with the application. We see that you have a garage under, if for the driveway, uh, that goes below grade, you have retaining walls on either side of the, of the garage frame. Is that what we have here?
Yes.
All right. Did you wanna tell us anything more specific than that, sir?
Uh, only, uh, that it was built before we bought the house. We have documentation that we submitted, uh, to the planning board, both to, uh, to, to document that fact and also to document its safety.
Thank you.
Is what it is.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wisdom.
So, I see that the retaining walls are from the, uh, site survey. Are those walls holding the dirt back from the underground, underground garage?
Mr. Wisdom, if you pay attention to Ms. Riccardi's screen, you'll see a photo of that.
Yeah.
No, they're not, they're not, uh, they're on the side of the driveway, not hold, not holding, they're only planter boxes that are holding back soil for our front and backyards.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. They're, they're like retaining walls, just holding back the soil, so it doesn't wash into the garage from the sides.
It doesn't, yeah, basically into the driveway, I mean.
Into the driveway.
Yeah, into the driveway area, yeah. Yeah, otherwise the, the grade would be way too high. The existing grade goes up too quickly.
You're just looking for not to fill up the garage in your driveway with soil on a rainy day.
No, that's never happened. We've lived here since two thousand and two.
Okay, I have nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Wisdom. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
I think we should talk about the height on this, seven-nine and an, and an eight-foot, one-inch height.
Yes, Mr. Wisdom, will you, that was a question for the applicants? Yes, Mr. and Mrs. Costanzo?
Is that, does that conform with the neighborhood? Are there other planters and retaining walls like that in the neighborhood or around the corner?
Um, I mean, there's one on Woodville where the walls are probably fifteen or twenty feet high. The whole front of the house is retaining walls without fences of any kind, so, yes, but that's not our next-door neighbor. It's several, several houses away.
Mr. Wisdom.
Sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Wisdom, if you pay attention to the screen, um, with Ms. Riccardi's, she's holding up a photo of what it looks like?
Yeah, I can't bring that over to the other screen. I'm on two screens. I'm trying to look at it through, um, Google Maps.
That, that's fine. If you have any other, any further questions, we'll take them.
No, I have no further questions.
All right. Is there anything, if there's nothing further from the board, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to grant the application type-two.
Motion is by Mr. Wisdom, taken by the chair, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Case number thirty-one, Robert and Patricia Ann Labiano, care of Andrew Malguanera. Properties located on the north side of Horser Place, six-hundred-and-twenty-one feet east of Holly Hill Lane Quorum. Applicant requests permission for existing in-ground swimming pool to be located less than the required twenty-five feet from overhead wires, fifteen feet.
Mr. Chair, I have Andrew Malguanera for the applicant.
Now, when are you, you look to me like you're muted.
Good enough.
So you've previously been sworn. Let's start with your appearance for the record, please.
Yes, Andrew Malguanera, seven-thirteen Main Street, Port Jefferson, agent.
Thank you, sir. What would you like to tell us here?
Pretty standard, uh, wire issue. We have the, uh, the hot-stick test, as, uh, Mr. Lindsay likes to see, and, uh, I think everything is conformance, so, the board has any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. We do acknowledge receipt of that for the record. In terms of the application, we see that you're at fourteen-six to the rear yard, that that's within, um, an acceptable range for the building department. Is that, is that?
That's correct.
Is that why you're not here for the variance?
They'll give us, they'll give us those six inches, yes. Not seven, but six.
I, I understand that. And we're only dealing with the setback to wires, not to the property line.
That is correct.
All right, and I, I did take a look at the stick test, so I have nothing further. If there's nothing further from the board, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to grant the application type-two.
Second. Motion by Mr. Wisdom, seconded by Mr. Mazarella, all in favor?
Aye.
The opposed motion carries. Thank you.
Case number thirty-two, Kristen and Brian Schnell, one-seven, one-ninety-five Fifth Avenue, Holtsville. Properties located on the east side of Fifth Avenue, three-hundred-and-eighty feet north of Ridgewood Avenue, Holtsville. Applicant requests rear yard and side yard variances for proposing ground swimming pool.
Mr. Chair, I have Kevin Gilfoyle for the applicant. And I also have the applicant, Brian Schnell.
Let's start with Mr. Gilfoyle. I guess you might as well promote them both, because by, by the speed of promotion, lately, it's probably just safer to do that early. Mr. Gilfoyle, we can see you. If you can unmute yourself. You look like you, uh, unmuted and then re, remuted. Could you try that again, Mr. Gilfoyle? Very good. Yes, and we have, we have your client here also. Did you, were you presenting this to us, Mr. Gilfoyle? Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Schnell, we can, are you able to hear us?
Yes.
All right, well, gentlemen, if you could just give your attention to the board's attorney, we'll have you both sworn.
The Psalm is where to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Yes, I do.
Very good. Uh, Mr. Gilfoyle, good to see you. We see that you're here for eight, uh, eight-foot setbacks for a proposed pool. What did you wanna tell us specifically?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We're here, uh, seeking permission to install a pool with an eight-foot side yard and eight-point-nine rear yard. My clients purchased this home in July of two thousand and eighteen, and the previous owners had built the existing large patio that you see on the survey. Even if the, my clients were looking to remove that patio, chances are putting a pool in that area, too, would also require us coming to the board. So what they did was they, uh, asked, are asking to build a modest-sized pool in the side yard. Even though we don't have any immediate comparable pools in the immediate area that have those setbacks, there are other properties within the area that have pools in the second front yard, et cetera. Due to the size of the lot and due to the location, um, of the pool, we do not think that it would be a significant or a detrimental effect for the neighborhood, and we'd ask the board to grant our application.
Thank you, Mr. Gilfoyle. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lindsay.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Lindsay. How are you?
Very good, very good. Thank you. How far off the, uh, is that a patio that you're coming off of, the masonry?
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Lindsay, I did submit photos into the, uh, board. I don't know if the, uh, the chairman had received them, but it's.
Yes, we have them.
It's a substantial patio, yes.
Okay, and how far off of that house are you with that? The pool?
Uh, it looks like about seven feet, eight feet. You guys have to get an engineer's letter on that, I believe.
Okay, uh, all right, you, you do have an engineer's letter on that, sir?
They're going to get one, yes.
Okay, you have, okay. I really have no further questions then, Mr. Chair.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Lindsay. Is there anything further from the board? Yes, Mr. Gilfoyle, in this instance, we see the backyard setback, rear yard setback on this, for this dwelling is, is tight, leaving little room, the pool, um, placement with a, with a, an eight- or nine-foot setback to the rear yard is, is a requirement. You, you referenced side yard before, but this, this pool is completely in the rear yard. It does require a side yard setback you're requesting because of the masonry patio. So let me ask the board if there's nothing further, whether there's a motion.
Yes, for sure. I'd like to grant the application type-two as presented.
Second.
Motion is by Mr. Lindsay, seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number thirty-four, Joseph and Lauren Duffy, care of Andrew Malguanera, located on the northwest corner Holly Street and Hammond Lane Center each. Applicant requests front yard setback variance from Holly Street and rear yard variance for proposed in-ground swimming pool located in the front yard. Also, front yard setback variance from Holly Street for existing enclosed cellar entrance.
Mr. Chair, I have Andrew Malguanera for the applicant.
Mr. Malguanera, your appearance for the record, please.
Andrew Malguanera, seven-thirteen Main Street, Port Jefferson, agent.
Thank you. You've got a busy one here. What would you like to tell us?
All right, so, uh, we're going for, uh, I'll start with the closed cellar entrance. Uh, my client built, I mean, purchased the house in two thousand and five, that was already there. Um, I believe the cellar entrance might have been original to the house. It was just enclosed at some point. Corner lot, you know, so, you know, here we are. It does not adverse effects to the neighborhood in any way. The pool, um, same thing with the corner lot situation. It's in the front, technically the front yard. It is, you know, squeezed in, I think, uh, appropriately. It's not, they're not asking for too much. Uh, they will have an engineer's letter for the seven feet to this, to the house. And, um, it is, you know, properly distanced from Holly Street as well. So I don't think of any adverse effects. There are a couple of corner lots in the area. Eighty-six Hammond has an above-ground pool in the front yard. Six Poplar has an above-ground pool in the front yard on corner lots, similar. And, uh, the board has any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lindsay, I'm sorry, Mr. Lazarus.
You got that right. This enclosed cellar entrance that's in the driveway.
Yes.
Is this flush with the ground?
Uh, yes, it goes to the ground, correct.
No, no, I mean, is it like a, a sewer cover?
Oh, no, 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 it's a full, it's a full enclosure. Like, it's like, it's more, you know, more or less like an addition type, um.
What you're saying is that?
It's not a bilco.
Not a bilco?
No.
It's a full height?
It's a door, yeah. It's an actual door that leads to it.
Okay, well, I'm not understanding, uh, the configuration. It, does it? Uh, okay, so it looks like a little shed with a door and you go down the stairs.
Exactly right.
Is the garage, is there a garage there, and is it used for a car?
Uh, no, there is no garage. No.
What, what is the, but it's a maintenance entrance, so if somebody just.
It's to the, to the cellar. Again, the, the, you know, he bought it like that and, and it's been there since, you know, probably the, the mid-nineties, but, uh, he owned it since two thousand and five.
Okay, so you're just, he, the owner's parking cars on a pavement?
Correct.
Okay. As far as the pool is concerned, how deep is that pool gonna be? You know?
Uh, I don't, honestly, I don't have the exact specs. I was standard, standard pool depth, uh, you know, eight to ten feet, I would imagine, but I don't know exactly.
Well, if it's gonna be eight to ten feet, you're gonna be very, you, you might have an improbable situation with the proximity against the foundation wall.
Absolutely, that's, we're gonna, we're gonna have to get an engineer to give us a, a letter on that. We intend to as well. We, you know, it's required.
Well, if, if you're looking for an engineer's letter after our approval or disapproval, or whatever it is, you might be a little bit too late. You find out that you're gonna undermine that foundation.
Yeah, I mean, I, we, you know, you gotta start step by step, so before they spend money on, uh, on an engineer, they gotta see if they could get the pool in that spot.
All right, so if they don't get this pool in the spot, you got an approval from us, let's say. Now, what do you do?
Well, if you, if you give us the approval, we'll get the engineer and, uh, and hopefully everything, everything checks out at that point.
And if it doesn't check out, you come back here because you got a smaller pool, or what?
Uh, no, I mean, we could, you know, again, we, the setbacks are established. We're not gonna ask for anything closer to seven, so if for some reason the engineer says, you know, it's not gonna work, for whatever reason, I mean, we'd have to, you know, shrink the pool, uh, you know, a foot or two, but, but maintain the setbacks we're asking for.
I see. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lazarus. Mr. Malguanera, there's, um, a couple of other issues ongoing with the parcel that your office is apparently taking care of. One is a letter of correction for a bump out to the rear and a front, the front porch. Is that, is that still ongoing?
Yes.
And with regard to the six-foot fencing on the Holly Street frontage, is the, the, the understanding is that's going to be moved to the, to the foundation of the, of the?
It's already been moved.
Already been moved.
I'm reflecting.
All right. That's what I needed to know. Um, we, we do also note for the record that the denial, um, includes the requirement that you provide the engineer's letter, uh, in order to, for the CO to issue, or the permit to issue, I'm sorry, and also that you're, you're seeking, um, permission from highway for the two, for the two driveways. And it's still ongoing also. Not a problem. All right. Is there anything further from the board? Does the board have a motion?
Uh, I would say, uh, grant the application with the, um, requirements that any of the, uh, requested revisions, changes, or whatever it is preceding, as well as dependent upon a letter from the engineer, that it's safe to put that pool there at that size.
All right, the motion is by Mr. Lazarus. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Case number thirty-five, Suzanne McEwen and Richard Sabatino, nine East Wilmot Turn Quorum, located on the northeast corner Whitfield Lane and Wilmot Turn Quorum. Applicant requests front yard setback variance from Whitfield Lane for proposed in-ground swimming pool to be located in the front yard.
Mr. Chair, I have Jennifer Leeds for the applicant.
Thank you, Ms. Leeds. Uh, we can see, were you able to hear us?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, and I believe you've previously been sworn. Let's just start with your appearance for the record.
Okay, Jennifer Leeds, one-thirty-four Sequoia Drive, Quorum, New York.
Thank you, Ms. Leeds. So what would you like to tell us here?
Suzanne and Richard, they are proposing an in-ground swimming pool. And it's going to, they're asking for you to allow them to locate it in the secondary front yard along Whitfield Lane. They, they are going to, uh, leave it eighteen feet from their property line along Whitfield Lane and sixteen from the rear. Usually, it's, uh, fif- fifteen is what's required from the rear. They are staying further away than fifteen from the, the secondary, uh, side yard. And there's not much else to say. It shows that location, uh, because they just redid the house and they still have other things they wanna do in the backyard. They feel, um, that the pool would be best located over there, 'cause they might, in the future, propose, uh, maybe a pool house or a shed, and they felt with the neighbor who's behind them along Whitfield Lane, it would be better off on the other side of their property, so when they look out their front door, their windows, they're not looking at a shed. So we didn't come and ask for a shed in the front yard. They'll keep that in, in an area where, uh, it's conforming. Um, there are a few properties in the neighborhood, to the south and the north, two corner lots that also, uh, have, uh, secondary front yard swimming pools.
Could you identify those for us, please? And can we bring the aerial back up?
Two Locust Avenue, uh, is on the corner of, uh, Wilmot and Locust. Two Locust Avenue is one. And then twenty-eight Windside Lane, uh, which is also on the corner of Wilmot and Windside.
Okay, we don't have the Windside, but we do have the Locust.
Windside is, um, yeah, almost, down. yeah, almost down. The, the other property on the other side of the road.
Across Wilmot?
Yes.
All right, to your knowledge, is that pool there pursuant to an action from the zoning board?
Not to my knowledge.
Is, is it permitted?
I, I, not to my knowledge, I'm not sure.
All right, but that's Wilmot, and then, Mr. Vega, if you could bring us to the initial one that was referenced. Locust and Wilmot. Okay, again, did you, uh, did you do any research to determine whether this one was permitted?
No, I did not.
All right, um, thank you. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Burksen.
Uh, Ms. Leeds, uh, it's really not clear to me, uh, how the, the, this selection of location that was made. Initially, I didn't think I would be able to see the, uh, the aerials, but they were blown up enough for me, this, of the other two properties. And although the view is very quick and, uh, a little difficult to see, it looks like those backyards are significantly different than the space available, uh, to these, to this applicant.
Yeah, the, uh, the aerial that you're looking at, that, if you see in the paperwork I handed in, he actually has a very recent construction that was done, so there really isn't an aerial out there with the house as it is now.
Well, what, what was done?
He, he had done, um, it's a permit, it was under permit nineteen B one three one 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 one. He had a garage addition, second floor addition. Uh, he, you know, he did it.
In terms of the backyard, what, what is preventing them from putting this on the other side of the property away from?
Well, it's not preventing them, what I was, what I was trying to explain before is that they do want to, uh, propose, they, they just started doing it, the whole backyard has nothing in it because of the construction on the house right now. So now the phase two is they want to create, uh, you know, a backyard to, to enjoy. So they have, maybe they want to do, they want to do an outdoor barbecue. They're not sure if they're gonna do a shed or a pool house. So the reason they decided to ask for the pool in this location is they felt the, the neighbor would probably prefer not seeing anything over in that area. Because they put the shed on the other side, do you see? What, where I'm saying, or, or a pool house where it's directly behind the house. They thought they'd have, basically, they need the, a variance for something, so they thought they'd have a better chance asking for the pool.
I'm not really sure what they, what in the future they may or may not need a variance for.
Well, I just told you, they're, they're, they're thinking of doing a pool house or a shed, but that's not on this application because they will be putting it in a conforming area.
Well, I, uh, actually, at this point, I really don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Burksen. In, in, in furtherance of Mr. Burksen's questioning, as, as we have the aerial up, I know that you can see it. As you go up Woodfield, I, I, I don't see any accessory uses, any accessory structures in the front yard, especially with the setbacks proposed, um, here. And I'm questioning whether or not there's, there's, there's any conformity to the neighborhood. I do see, and let's clarify, in the aerial, there's a pool there, it looks like an above ground pool. That pool which was there is gone. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, and, um, in, in terms of, uh, this application, we can, we can agree that the rear yard is, um, is level and it doesn't have any significant trees or, 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 or anything that would prevent the pool from being at another location. You're saying it's their preference that it go in the corner that they're proposing in.
They wanted it on that side of the property, yes, due to putting in a shed or something. They thought that it would, that would be the better location and the shed in the other side of the property or perhaps a cabana, pool house.
When they decided, I mean, when they made that decision, they probably were not aware that the code prohibits.
No, they, they were.
Front yard pools.
They were, that's why we came to you first, because they're in the very beginnings of planning, you know? So that's why we came to you first, it's very early stage of planning their, their whole backyard.
All right, thank you. Is there anything further from the board on the application? Do we have any speakers or any written communication?
Um, we are, we are eighteen feet from, from the, uh, secondary side property line. Would the board be more comfortable if he maybe moved in, uh, three feet?
I think the changed application would be placing the pool behind the foundation of the house, which would be a front yard setback of forty feet, but that's just my, that's just me speaking. I mean, the board will deliberate on the application and we'll, we'll have a decision for you. In, in terms of the communication or speakers, do we have, do we have anything? All right, and if, if there's nothing further from the board, Ms. Leeds, did you have anything else for us?
No, thank you.
If, if now we'll ask the board for a motion.
Move to closing hold, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Burksen, seconded by, I'm sorry, was it Mr. Mazarella? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Case number thirty-six, Tina Milletich and Shaboonar, care of Andrew Malguinera. Properties located on the west side of Ocean Avenue, six hundred and eighty-seven feet south of Sedgmere Road, Center Ridges. Applicant requests permission for proposed in-ground swimming pool and proposed pool house to be located in the front yard, not permitted. Also, height variance for proposed six-foot high fence to be located in the front yard.
Mr. Chair, I have Andrew Malguinera for the applicant.
Mr. Malguinera, are you back? Let's take your appearance for the record, please.
Andrew Malguinera, seven thirteen Main Street Port Jefferson agent.
Thank you, Mr. Malguinera. There are three tax lots together comprising the applicant's holdings here.
Yes.
Lots eight, nine, and ten. Are they owned in the same name, are they merged lots or are they, do they remain separate?
Oh, this was a property split, um, done from, if you pull up the aerial again, that huge lot was part of, was, this was part of that lot. That was split, um, recently, fairly recently, and, um, and they created its own separate, you know, uh, lot, and those two lots are merged together.
So, so, or lots eight, which, which, uh, which I think is the lot that the pool is proposed on and lot nine with the houses, are they in common ownership?
Yes, yes.
All right, so I, I just want to know for the record that while the application refers to, um, permission for an in-ground pool, it refers to lot nine, which is the house. Um, and we can agree that the, the application is for lot eight.
Exactly.
All right, um, what would you like to tell us here?
All right, so again, like, like, you know, we just said, it's a unique circumstance in the sense that this was part of a larger, much larger property, uh, it was split off and, um, the applicant's purchase this house and want to put a pool in. This is, um, obviously you see the space, the, the best part, place to put it, um, for this unique lot. Again, not, not, not typical, most houses are much further closer to Ocean Avenue than ours. Uh, ours is pushed all the way back. That being said, we're still a hundred, you know, we're gonna be over a hundred thirty feet from the, the street um, with, with trees and everything in, in its way. We're gonna put a fence up for privacy on top of that, if the board should feel more comfortable with it, we would, you know, um, we, we would vegetate in front of the fence to, uh, hinder, uh, the view from Ocean Avenue even more than it already would be. Um, so there would be no impact on neighborhood whatsoever, and if the board has any questions, please, uh, let me know.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Jan.
Mr. Mazarella.
Hey, Andrew.
Hello.
So, um, I mean, realistically, uh, because lots are joint, uh, that, that's what brought about the design here. It's not really, um, because it was, uh, a great spot or anything. They didn't own the property before. So I guess they purchased it and, uh, now want to do something with it.
Right, well, as far as I know, all three lots, the flag, the, one, the front with the pool is gonna go, the house that, that we have and that big lot behind it, we're all one, one ownership, it got split. And, um, and what remains are these two lots together.
Okay. Um, so, I mean, it looks like, I mean, from what I could see on the survey, the proposal, fence, pool, pool house and whatnot, it looked like they're drawn in with pencil in it.
It didn't scan too well, but it's, uh,
So, so help me out a little bit here. I have a question on the pool house. Um, and the dimensions, I see a, I see a seven point three in the middle, that looks like.
Right, it's a roughly four hundred, um, it's four hundred, maybe eighty square foot pool house.
Are you saying it's fifty foot long, that pool house?
The pool house, no, no, it's, it's, it's a regular and it's thirty feet.
The fifty foot section is the pool.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. All right, that, that, I'm confused, I'm looking at it, I'm looking at it upside down, hold on.
I get it, I get it.
All right, so now I see what you're saying, all right, so, so ten by twelve by ten. So, and now I see the four eighty, I'm sorry.
Don't be, don't be.
All right, and then, yeah, because I see all the pencil marks here, which is the seven foot on the fence. All right, now, um, are there, is there any plan yet for the pool house? I mean, what, what are we, what are we talking about here? Electricity, um, you know?
Yeah, probably, you know, entertainment space, you know, changing room, one of the houses is small, you know, so, um, you know, just store it, pool equipment storage, change room maybe, you know, possibly a bar setup, you know, no, no, no bathroom. Um, but, um, yeah, standard pool house, a nice pool house.
Height?
Uh, the height is within, within code, I know that, I don't know the, I don't know the exact height, maybe about fourteen feet.
Okay. And, uh, fence is gonna be on all four sides of this project.
Yes, they have, uh, they have tween girls, so, uh, keep it safe.
Pool house, we, uh, are we gonna get water, is it gonna be plumbing?
Um, maybe a kid, a sink, you know, for a bar area, you know, stuff like that. It's gonna be a nice, it's gonna be a nice setup for that, you know, just enhance the overall property.
All right, Mr. Chairman, if I may ask you a question, I mean, you know, um, because it's, it's very difficult to tell by what's given here, you know, what that setup is going to be as far as, um, the specifics of the pool house. Is that something that goes back to planning as far as after the variance is granted?
The, uh, the pool house specifically would, um, should the board decide to grant the application, it would include the, like, the standard pool house covenant. We, uh, I'm not sure if you, you do have the worksheet today, so on page one, two, three, four, five, six of the worksheet, um, toward the bottom, you'll see the pool house covenant language. So they talk, talk specifically about the, um, the, uh, it's actually very specific concerning, uh, use of water, um, the number of rooms, uh, things of that nature.
We'll gladly do a covenant if, if it makes the board more comfortable.
I think, I think that, that probably speaks to many of the issues that you, um, that you had there.
That's no problem.
A pool house covenant, all right, I see it now. Just give me a sec. Okay, gotcha, thank you.
All right, and actually, Mr. Mazarella, what I didn't know, because I haven't looked at the code for pool houses, um, anytime recently, and maybe Mr. Malguinera could help both of us, in terms of the square, permitted square footage of a pool house currently in the code, I haven't, it's been a while since I looked, um, does the four hundred and eighty square feet proposed exceed the, uh, the permissions of?
No, it does not.
That's why we didn't get a denial.
Garage, same as garage six hundred, if I'm not mistaken.
That seems vague.
I don't know.
We'll, we'll check, we'll check on it.
Yeah, you can double check, you can double check my work there.
All right, is there anything further from the board on the application? Do we have speakers?
Mr. Chair, I have no speaker.
Uh, Ms. Ricardi's doing a quick, um, quick check.
On square footage?
On square footage, yes. I can look it up quick, but I, I, we can do it after the hearing. All right. All right, and we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah.
And.
We didn't specify to the building department of the size and they didn't, um, they didn't noted to be denied for, so, you know, assume they, you know, they knew the size, they didn't deny for it, you would assume it's falling in line.
All right, you know, there is some question about it, because as you will recall, uh, Mr. Malguinera, there was a time under the prior building chief building inspector that the square footage of the pool house was one size, that has changed, we know that that has changed. So, so we'll look into it and we will, um, we'll resolve this, um, either way. Is there anything further from the board on the application? Uh, then, does the board have a motion?
Janice, the chair, closing hold.
Motion by Mr. Mazarella, seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, case number thirty-seven, Stephanie Fortier, two oh seven Lake Drive, Patchogue. Properties located on the east side of Lake Drive, two thousand seven hundred and thirty-three feet north of Montauk Highway, Patchogue. Applicant requests front yard setback variance for existing first and second story residence additions, creating entire first floor area exceeding the twelve hundred square feet permitted, thirteen hundred and thirty-two square feet. Also, side yard variance for existing in-ground swimming pool.
Mr. Chair, I have Ralph Elsasser for the applicant.
Thank you. Ms. Elsasser, good to see you again, you've previously been sworn, let's start with your appearance.
Uh, Ralph Elsasser, the applicant, Stephanie Forty, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, we see you here for an addition to the home and for a pool, what would you like to tell us?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, at this point, uh, the house itself, we had to go for a CEU, the house is very, very old. Uh, the addition was put on this home in nineteen ninety-five. Uh, the pool was actually put in in the year two thousand. Uh, there are several structures on the property and one in particular, which I found amazing, was the framed building in the back, which was CEO, was literally off the property line. So that is gone, there was a deck there that is gone, the hot tub is gone, and the shed is gone. They're gonna be putting a new shed in there, but the shed will, uh, be built to conform because it's a little too close to the property line.
Thank you, Mr. Elsasser. Uh, Mr. Doyle, let me ask, could, could you enlighten the board at all with regard to this complaint number one nine zero two zero zero eight zero seven indicating pending litigation?
What's the hard address on this?
Yeah, hard address, Mr. Elsasser, can you help us with that? Oh, I see it, two oh seven Lake Drive.
Yes. Okay.
Patchogue.
Right. Oh, oh, eight, oh, seven.
Yes.
Let me see if we got here. Looks like it was no longer in court, there's additional discharge, uh, to come into compliance to get the proper permits. So it looks like this is the, uh, natural progression of where we need to come to compliance.
All right, thank you, Mr. Elsasser, was there anything further?
Nope, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Was, was there? Was there anything further from the board? Um, I'll note for the record, the application is subject to chapter eighty-one of the code, does the board have a motion?
Yes, for sure, I'd like to accept the application presented.
Motion is by Mr. Lindsay, seconded by Mr. Wisdom. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Elsasser, good to see you.
Mr. Chairman, good to see you, have a good evening, bye.
You too.
Case number thirty-eight, Jean Mark Homard, care of Michelle Cattralli, one hundred Colonial Drive, East Patchogue, located on the north side of Fire Island Boulevard, seven hundred and thirteen feet west of Tuna Walk, Fire Island Pines, Fire Island National Seashore. Applicant requests front yard setback variance for proposed deck. Minimum and total side yard variances for proposed spiral stairs to roof deck and walk. Permission for proposed six-foot high fence located in the front yard and permission for lot occupancy to exceed thirty-five percent permitted, thirty-seven point seven five percent.
Mr. Chair, I have Michelle Cattralli for the applicant.
Thank you.
Hi.
Ms. Cattralli, I can hear you, I don't, oh, I do see you.
I also have the applicant, Mr. Chair.
Very good, Ms. Ms. Cattralli, we have the applicant with us, would you like him promoted?
Yes.
With him promoted, yes, then we can do that. With him promoted? Yes, then we can do that. Ms. Cattralli, you were going to present here. So while we're promoting your client, why don't we have you sworn?
Yes.
Usam is where I told the troop, the whole troop, and nothing but the troops will help you.
I do.
Very good. Then we'll start with your appearance for the record.
Michelle Cattralli, one hundred Colonial Drive East Patchogue, New York, agent for the applicant.
Thank you, Ms. Cattralli. We you are here for variances for certain structures. In addition to lot coverage, a lot coverage variance, what would you like to tell us specifically?
First off, Mr. Harmon's house burned down basically a year ago this month. We are proposing to construct a new one-story dwelling with accessory structures. The one-story dwelling being proposed will be conforming to the town code. We're before you to request a nine point three three foot minimum side yard setback for with a twenty-four point five foot total side yard setback for that proposed spiral staircase to a roof deck. They'll be constructed on the the newly one-story dwelling. Code requires twelve foot minimum side yard with a thirty foot total side yard for this size property. Our relief sought is around twenty-two percent respectively for the minimum and eighteen percent for the total. We're also requesting a fourteen point nine foot front yard setback where twenty feet is required by code or a twenty-five percent relief is sought. The previous dwelling had an eight point three foot minimum side with a twenty-two point three foot total side. So this new proposal increases all the setbacks that were previously held except for the front yard setback. The previous dwelling before the fire was moved five feet south, excuse me, the was moved five feet north. So this new dwelling is a little closer to the front yard. It gives the privacy to the northern neighbors by doing so. And as you can see by the photos and the survey submitted, the front yard property boundary is seventy-eight feet to the bar, the Boulevard, and it has standing water in between or ninety-three feet to the proposed front deck. The entire lot is densely vegetated and the proposal before you will not be clearing anymore than what's been cleared already. We're also asking to install a six-foot fence beyond the principal structure and along the the perimeter of the property, which is this board has granted numerous times, especially in the Fire Island Pines community or Fire Island as a whole. We're asking to maintain the same lot coverage as what was previously granted to Mr. Harmon by this board on May fifteen, two thousand and eight, which was a thirty-eight percent lot coverage. All the requested setbacks and lot coverage are not out of character for the Fire Island Pines. We believe that the area variances will not have an adverse effect or impact to the surrounding parcels or a negative impact on the environment. We have a pending DEP wetland permit to construct, and I believe you have received today a letter from the Fire Island Pines Property Owners Association, basically stating that they have no issue as long as I can demonstrate that we had that thirty-eight percent, which was granted in two thousand and eight. And of course, we got a letter from Fire Island National Seashore objecting to that thirty-eight percent lot coverage. So if you have any questions or if Mr. Harmon would like to add anything.
Sir, you you're muted right now. Would you like to add anything to the presentation of Ms. Cattralli? I'm just gonna ask you to unmute yourself if you would like to speak with us. Sometimes if you run your mouse over the screen, you'll see, oh, there you go. Very good, sir. I'm just gonna ask you.
I was just going to say, I want to answer any questions if you have any, but now Michelle presented the case adequately and accurately.
Well, thank you for attending. Thank you very much, sir. So, Ms. Cattralli, I will tell you that we do have those communications. I'm going to have Ms. Cardy read them for the record.
Thank you. From National Park Service, Fire Island National Seashore, the National Park Service objects to the overdevelopment of this property. This is an opportunity to build in line with the federal zoning regulations of thirty-five percent. Proposed rebuilt is over thirty-seven percent. Removal of a small area of deck or accessory structures would help the lot to conform. I have from Fire Island Pines Property Owners Association, zoning advisory committee. We understand but not have verified that the board approved lot coverage of thirty-eight percent on May fifteen, two thousand and eight. We assume that the owner or his representative have provided proof of same as the proposed lot coverage remains substantially unchanged at thirty-seven point seven five percent. We have no objection to this application. And I have one other correspondence from a neighbor, Gail Levine. I am the owner of five forty Sandy Walk, Fire Island Pines. I wish to state that I am not in favor of allowing the variances.
All right, then, in terms of the the structures and the setbacks proposed, Ms. Cattralli, we are familiar with the area, and we do see that they fall within line of prior actions of this board. Talk to us, please, about the lot coverage request. There was in place, you say, prior action of this board for what structures were there and were and succumbed to fire at a lot coverage of thirty-eight percent?
Correct. May fifteen, two thousand and eight, Mr. Malgadara, senior, did a variance here and and you're this board approved a thirty-eight percent lot coverage. It has a certificate was issued. And we we feel that under, under the basically the eighty-five, three seventy-seven A two, if we would have kept the house.
You're saying you're building in kind due to a fire loss?
Correct, yeah.
Is it was more than fifty percent of the structure? It was more than fifty percent. It was total. So so I mean, there there is an argument. Certainly, you know that that permission is lost, and now you're here with all proposed structures at two and a half percent or two and seven, two point seven five percent over lot coverage.
Yes, we 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 understand that, but.
Did you? Did you do the calculation to determine actually what what square footage that actually means? In some cases, it's not significant.
We could do that fairly quickly. You want to give me a few minutes?
I wrote, I wrote about, I see a number on my survey that in reviewing for the application, six hundred something square feet, something like that. Does that sound?
I'm not quite sure, but I can, yeah, it's eight eight, one, two, point five times. Three oh eight four.
Yeah. Does it?
You're you're looking at about four hundred square feet to be removed.
In in terms of the total decking on this on this parcel, you have two decking pool, two thousand two hundred and eighty square foot of decking. I I know that these, the question and the answer are easy. Can can you conform? You can. So.
There's not that much decking in the rear yard. There's very little decking in the front. It's an entry deck to go in the front just for, you'll have the pergola on top of the entry deck. It's not where they're going to be sitting and and hanging out. The main deck in the back would be where that is, and that's a very small deck compared to any of the decks over at Fire Island. As you know, the the main thing is your outside enjoyment. You need some space to put your lounge chairs, your entertainment table, your, you know, your seating areas.
Did the size of the house?
Not.
On the rebuild, the square footage?
The existing residence was thousand sixty-eight square feet before the fire. It's now two thousand twenty-four.
All right, so we're close to double the size of the house. I actually have it here. Sorry. And I'm sorry, I mentioned before, two thousand two hundred and eighty square feet of decking pool, that that was incorrect. That was with the older house because it was a smaller structure. You have here one thousand three hundred and three square feet. Because in in essence, again, the house.
Larger is less. Right.
All right. So I mean, I'm assuming you you did speak with your with your client in in terms of what was being proposed in term in specifically the lot coverage. There was no discussion that considered a smaller request for lot coverage?
Yes, I had advised him and he feels that since the fire, which wasn't his fault, took away his rights that were this board already granted to him, he would like to try to get that back.
All right. Thank you. Is there anything further from the board on the application? Is there anyone wishing to speak on the application?
Mr. Chair, I have no one speak. I'm just gonna ask the board for a motion to close and hold.
Oh, move.
Motion second have been made all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries? Thank you, Ms. Cattralli.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. I believe that would conclude the four PM calendar. And as I understand it, there is one application on the holdover calendar. If if we have the applicant's representative. Fifty-seven, one is being held. Oh, two. I'm sorry. Yeah. I'm sorry, Ms. Cattralli. And that would be, we have you for cases eight to nine. Mr. Cardy will read the call.
Thank you.
Case numbers eight and nine of August twenty-six, two thousand twenty, Olindo, Rosigno, care of Michelle Cattralli, properties located on the south side, Mariches Middle Island Road, three hundred and six feet west of West End Avenue Shirley. Applicant requests division of a parcel into two plots, A and B, requiring lot area, lot frontage, front yard setback, rear yard, and total side yard variances for proposed one-family dwelling on Lot A. Lot area, lot frontage, front yard setback, rear yard, and minimum and total side yard variances for proposed one-family dwelling on plot B.
All right, then we'll start with your appearance first, Ms. Cattralli, please.
Michelle Cattralli, one hundred Colonial Drive East Patchogue, New York, one one seven seven two, agent for the applicant.
Thank you, Ms. Cattralli. The record should reflect that the original public hearing on this matter was held, was it October twenty, August twenty-six, two thousand twenty? At that time, the board requested revised surveys showing clearing in accordance with, I guess it was Pine Baron standards. I will acknowledge receipt of the applicant's revised survey, the revised September sixteen, two thousand twenty, establishing with clearing calculations and the placement of the other proposed dwellings. Did you want to provide the board with any further information, Ms. Cattralli?
No, I just want to reiterate that we believe that this is a minor
Chris's report.
To grant and that
And an objection.
The area is is a hefty percentage and we could, we're we're abiding by the 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 Pine Barrens clearing limits.
All right, we do have a further report from the board's planner. Ms. Ms. Cardy will read it for the record.
This is a supplemental report dated September twenty-second. Let's see, the following report, which was heard on August twenty-second, was held open for the applicant to provide documentation that the proposed endeavor would conform to the requisite Pine Baron standards for clearing. The applicant has provided a revised land division plan prepared by Kenneth Wojcik dated September sixteenth, two thousand twenty, reflecting same with percentages of clearing at thirty percent on Lot One and twenty-three percent on Lot Two, illustrating a total of fifteen thousand one hundred square feet of clearing or fifty-three percent of the twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-two square foot parcel. The proposed clearing is in accordance with Pine Baron standards and appears to provide for reasonable space for the dwelling and usable space for the potential homeowners. Should the board look favorably on the application, mitigation is attached for the board's consideration, being an unlisted action pursuant to SEQA. I also have a letter from a neighbor. Would you like me to read that now?
Yes.
Okay, this is from Ryan S. He didn't give his last name, eighty-six Collin Drive East Yapp Hank. Please reject the application. Applicant requests lot area, lot frontage, front yard setback. He was all the variances on plot B. There are open spaces in our neighborhood disappearing every month. We need to preserve these open spaces since most do not accommodate dwellings that meet town code for front yard setback, rear setback, or sides side yard spacing. Homes are being squeezed in and impacting privacy for bordering properties already established. Homes with more spacious lots should be the goal of the town, not sandwiching homes on top of one another. This is not Nassau County, especially Western Nassau. We are in an environmentally sensitive area as well, central Pine Barrens. There are plenty of abandoned homes that can be renovated or torn down and rebuilt to establish new dwellings. We must preserve out small wooded lots for the sake of the community. Please reject this application as this lot is best preserved as is a wooded lot.
All right, then, Ms. Cattralli, was there any final comment for the board?
I did get Mr. Reed's report. We're in agreement with the report. So if this board does deem this to be granted, which I hope you do, because this has been in my client's family for many years, we will abide by the mitigating measures.
Thank you. I will remind the board that in addition to the Pine Barrens issues that were spoken to, spoken of by the board's planner, there was also a reference to, I believe it was the Ford River, Forge River management plan, was it, Ms. Cattralli, which was it the Ford River?
We're over three, three thousand square, three thousand feet away from the Carmen River.
Carmen River. I I knew it was one of the rivers.
That's little to no to the Carmen River.
Thank you. I mean, in terms of that, though, there were, there was a part of the initial record that the board needs to review before making the appropriate decision on this. As a result, I'm going to ask for a motion to close and hold.
Don't move.
Motion and second have been made all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries? Thank you, Ms. Cattralli.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
You, too.
Thank you.
Think that you can take just the next single one for the. Yep.
Okay, case number thirty of November twentieth, two thousand nineteen, fifty-seven Pennsylvania Avenue Realty LLC, care of JW Consulting, PO Box six seventy-four Quorum, located on the east side of Pennsylvania Avenue, fourteen hundred and forty-five feet south of South Haven Avenue, Medford. Applicant requests certificate of existing use for two-family, two-story, twenty-six point two foot by forty-two point three foot dwelling, fifteen point seven foot by ten foot enclosed front porch, rear bulkhead door, detached concrete block garage, and the CEU number three oh six nine six two is issued an error.
Mr. Chair, I have John Wees for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. Mr. Wees, we can see you. Are you able to hear us?
Yes, I am.
All right, sir. Let's just gonna ask you to give your attention to Mr. Doyle. We'll have you sworn.
Usam is where I told the troop, the whole troop, and nothing but the troop.
I do.
All right, then, your appearance on this application, please.
I'm I'm here in behalf of Larry Davis, in behalf of the applicant, and I'd like this case, if possible, to be held over to the next hearing date.
Thank you. Does the board have a motion to hold this matter over until, I believe, it's October seven? October seven. Motion and second have been made. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries? We'll move on to the next case.
Case numbers ten and eleven of July twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, fifty-seven Pennsylvania Avenue Realty LLC, care of JW Consulting, properties located on the east side of Pennsylvania Avenue, fourteen hundred and forty-five feet south of South Haven Avenue, Medford. Applicant requests division of a parcel into two plots, one and two, requiring lot area, lot frontage, and minimum and total side yard variances for existing two-family dwelling on Lot One. Lot frontage variance for proposed one-family dwelling on Lot Two.
All right, then, Mr. Wees, your appearance here.
At the last hearing, can we have the minutes from the last hearing made part of this hearing?
Let me just ask you if you could give your appearance for the record for cases.
John Wees, JW Consulting, here on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to incorporate the minutes of the prior proceedings? Motion and second have been made all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries? Mr. Wees, so before you say anything, my understanding was that the that the board did hear the land division and you're here with revised surveys, I think, in essence, revising the application in a manner in which the board requested. And of course, I, you know, the board appreciates that. Will that, will the board's favorable, I guess that's a funny question to ask. I I had believed that the board's favorable decision on the land division would obviate the need to to hear the CEU application. Is that still accurate or no?
That's a hundred percent accurate.
All right. So but then in terms of the land division, what I'm hearing is that there's a two-family dwelling on plot one. Are you amending for a single family dwelling on both lots?
I would clearly do so. That that's not a problem.
All right. So I I didn't think it was an issue anymore because you then you still would have needed a CEU application.
Right.
You understand what I'm saying? So you'll you'll have a divided parcel with two one-family dwellings.
Right, because if if the grant is granted, as it appears that we're looking at, the code specifically states that the nonconforming use is automatically lost. So by making an application and going before the board and wasting everybody's time, let's say miraculously we got the two family, if the board splits the property, we lose the two family. So
All right.
At the next hearing, we're going to withdraw.
I'm gonna ask him to amend the application. I know. I see what he's asking. I'm going to ask him to amend the application. I know, I see what he's asking. Yes. So I'm going to ask you to amend case number 10 then, wherein it's asking for a land division with a two-family dwelling.
So move, I will do that.
I did it, I did it.
I did it for you, Mr. Wees. I was right there. For the last case.
Does the board have a motion to amend case number 10 to eliminate the request for a two-family dwelling on Plot 1?
So move.
All right, motion and second have been made all in favor? Any opposed motion carries? On this application then, Mr. Wees, you were kind enough to get us revised surveys. What presentation did you have for us here?
The only thing that was required was for that, the first hearing covered all the bases, I was under my impression. And the stipulation or the need was for a revised survey showing a 20-foot entranceway instead of a 30-foot entranceway.
And we wanted you to equalize a lot areas and you did that also.
We couldn't totally equalize it because we would lose the.
But they got better.
They got better and we would lose the health department for the back lot.
Understood. Is there a revised report from the board's planner? I guess I should, I should ask you, did you receive a revised report?
No, I did not.
All right. All right, Mr. Wees, I would like the board to act quickly on this, in that you've done everything we've asked you to do thus far. But I do need the board's, the planner's revised report with mitigation, if any, to move, to have the board move forward with the application. So I'm going to ask you to, for permission, to put you on October 7 also, I'll get the report and we'll have it, we'll have a decision for you on October 7. Is that, that's, I think the best I can do. Is that acceptable? All right then. Is there a motion held over until October 7? Motion second have been made all in favor? Any opposed motion carries? Thank you. That would conclude, I believe, the holdover calendar. I'm going to ask the board for motion for executive session. Motion and second have been made all in favor? Opposed motion carries. I will see you all at 7:15. Is there a motion to resume the hearing? Motion made and seconded all in favor? The opposed motion carries, board members. Turning to today's worksheet. To page number one, case number one, in the name of Harbor Boat Realty Incorporated. Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we will grant the application as amended for four canopy signs to be reduced to 16 square feet in a type 2 action.
Motion is by Mr. Lazarus, seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor? Any opposed motion carries? Turning to same page, case number two, in the name of LBW Bellport LLC. Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, grant the application with respects to the height, but denied for the square foot area of the sign. Type 2 action.
Motion is by Mr. Lindsay. By Mr., I'm sorry, motion is by Mr. Lazarus, was the second by Mr. Wisdom? Second by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor? Opposed motion carries to page four. Case numbers nine through 11. We're going to take this motion slow. Case numbers nine through 11, in the name of Ashley Holmes of Long Island. Does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Granted, 18-foot minimum side yard and total 40-foot side yard on Lot 1 with a rear yard of 90 feet. Minimum side yard and 40-foot total side yard of Lot 2. Subject to all mitigation matters, measures of the ZBA planner. Negative declaration.
Motion is by Mr. Lindsay, seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor? Opposed motion carries to page 13. Case number 36, the name of Tina Melatic and Shabu Nair. Does the board have a motion?
That's not me.
Mr. Lindsay. I have Mr. Lindsay's motion as a granted, as presented with a pool covenant to be filed with the offices of Suffolk County Clerk. By Mr. Wisdom, all in favor? Any opposed? Record should reflect that Mr. Mazarella is opposed, Mr. Lazarus is opposed. Carrie carries for in favor with two opposed. Turning to page 14. Case number 38. In the name of Gene Mark Humard, does the board have a motion? I'm sorry, I would move then to grant the application but deny for lot coverage subject to chapter 81 as a type 2 action. Seconded by Mr. Mazarella, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, turning to page 18. Case, under grant, request for grant extension, case three of September 5, 2018, in the name of Rafael Guardi, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, prior grant of 10-318 is extended for a period of six months to expire 4-321.
Motion is by Mr. Lindsay, seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor? Any opposed motion carries? On the same page, under request for grant extension, cases 1 through 3 of September 19, 2018, in the name of the estate of Robert King, Senior, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, prior grant of 9-19 is extended for a period of six months to expire at 3-1921.
Motion is by Mr. Lindsay, seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor? Opposed motion carries, under request for grant extension, page 19. Case 19 of April 4, 2018, the name of Carlos Mina Fornas, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the prior grant of 6-2018 is extended for a period of six months to expire 12-2020.
Motion by Mr. Lazarus, seconded by Mr. Mazarella, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, under clarification of motion, case 49 of May 20, 2020, the name of Christine Zambrisky and Donna DeTura, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the prior grant of 5-2020 is clarified to reflect the approval of an eight-foot by 14-foot shed, remaining conditions as originally approved.
Motion by Mr. Lazarus. Seconded by Mr. Mazarella, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, turning to page 23. Cases 15 and 16 of August 26, 2020, in the name of Mary Ryan, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, denied pursuant to findings of fact and conclusions.
Motion by Mr. Lazarus. Seconded by Mr. Mazarella, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, turning to page 24. Case 41 of August 26, 2020, in the name of William Napolitano, does the board have a motion?
Granted, yes, Mr. Chair, granted, as presented. Granted as presented, existing walls fenced to be removed or moved pursuant to the plan prepared by Volmuth and brush dated 1-1420.
Motion by Mr. Lindsay. Seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor? Any opposed motion carries, on the same page, case 42 of August 26, 2020, the name of A Plus Homes Incorporated, does the board have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, granted, as presented, existing walls fencing to be removed or moved pursuant to plan prepared by Volmuth and brush dated 1-1420. Type 2 action.
Motion by Mr. Lindsay, seconded by Mr. Wisdom, all in favor? Any opposed motion carries? Finally, board members, turning to page 25, case, see the case number, but the case name is Roland Sabet, S-A-B-E-T, the chair would move to grant the application as a type 2 action subject to standard residential mitigation measures. The board notes that this land division was previously granted and that said grant has expired. Nowwithstanding, the board notes no changes in the development pattern of the area and therefore renews its prior grant. Does the board have a second? What motion and second have been made all in favor? Any opposed motion carries? Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion and second have been made all in favor? Any opposed motion carries? Good evening.